Okay, we'll call to order. Thank you all for being here officially 5:33 PM. Please do roll call.
Mayor Pro Tim Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Caffey. Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Olivares.
Here.
Councilmember Starnes.
Here.
Councilmember Melton.
Here.
If you would please stand for the pledge followed by the notification.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Melton.
On this Columbus Day, we celebrate our indigenous friends, family, and neighbors with this prayer. Gracious God, we give thanks and praise for this wondrous world in which we live. Beauty and diversity surround us. God, our Creator, we ask that we have the wisdom and patience to listen to one another and to learn the many ways you call us to live life. Teach us the ways to live that heal and renew so that we may hand our community on to future generations to come radiant with your goodness and glory. Bless this meeting tonight and may our words and actions reflect your love and grace for the betterment of our dear town. Amen.
And thank you, Council, for being present tonight. Thank you to our citizens who are present tonight as well. Sincerely appreciate it. We'll move down to item four on the agenda, Citizens Communications. I'm sure we have some citizens signed up. Before we start the Citizens Communications, thank you. Before we start the Citizens Communication, I'll remind anyone that wants to get up and talk that you have three minutes to speak. Council can't respond to you. It's appropriate for the Citizens Communications. But we'll have a timer. When that goes off, your three minutes is up. I ask that you please comply with the policy of three minutes and respect that as well. First on the list is Nils Berry.
Yes, sir. First right on the box. To speak?
Go ahead, sir.
Some things that I wanted to speak about really need to be discussed in closed chambers. Did my phone close us? Okay. Some of the things I need to speak to City Council need to be discussed in closed chambers for the reasons of security, retaliation. But that's one topic I really would like to express on. I've invited quite a few people to join me here tonight and a couple of other City Council meetings. But there's an element in this town that exists to where people are scared and they have every right to be because I know firsthand. I've been experienced with retaliation that goes on behind this man's back. And it didn't just start with him being here and as chief, the new chief. But it still exists from the old one. And I don't think there's anyone better in this room to ask questions of or have for reference than myself because I've studied this police department for over six years. And I've come to my conclusions not really out of desperation. But if I don't get something done, I'm a goner. The odds are stacked against me. I feel like a kamikaze pilot right now that's welded in his cockpit. But I might want to go bond me in because I know there's a lot of people. I'm going to try and hit my own ship. So to speak. That's how personal I am. And some of the City Council here have gotten packets from me. I'm looking at two that I know about what's wrong with RPD and why it's against the law. And if it's not against the law, someone correct me because Kirby King is on my side. So is my psychologist. So I'm not alone even though I stand before you alone. And I've come to say assessments instead of reductions or conclusions. And everything I tell you, I tell you from deep in my heart that on my father's grave is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God, it struck me dead, which lately death would be better than what I'm living through. I've been faced due to bad choices, I guess, so to speak. But hackers are people writing bad checks on me that should be in jail or in prison. And police brought me right now, not knowingly, has cases to put one of them back in jail. The policeman didn't do his job completely. And I'd be feel welcome at my place, which I don't. I don't go there only anymore, anymore than I have to until I get the squatters out of my driveway.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. I appreciate it.
Time's up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.
Joan Ratliff.
How's that? I'm Joan Ratliff. I live in Rockdale and I own a business, Rainbow Courts in Rockdale. The business has been in my family for 106 years only. And my husband and I have had the business for 32 years. So I've had a bit of hotel experience. And I'm really happy to be here to see our City Council people. Even Dave's had some hospitality experience in hotels. And there's quite a few business people here. So I'm here to talk about basically the appeal for a study, feasibility study, to build a new hotel in Rockdale. So I'm going to start with last week. Someone came into my office. I walked into the office and she said, "I'm from so-and-so TV channel in Bryan College Station. And I'm here to interview you as a hotelier about how you feel about MDD and the city supporting building, using hot funds, hotel occupancy tax funds, hot funds, to build a new hotel." And I thought, "I have no idea what you're talking about. Can you give me an hour? Come back." Anyway, I called Jim and he was gracious enough to answer the phone. And he explained to me that MDD and they've worked with the city feel that we need a full-service hotel in town that, to be frank, is on a level above what we have now. We have nine hotel motels in Rockdale. I don't know if you realize that. That's a lot that we're spreading pretty thin on occupancy with. So to build another one, oh, and that cobblestone, an investor in Cobblestone Hotels, I don't know if you're familiar with them, is interested in possibly building a hotel, another hotel in Rockdale, and would like for MDD and the city to use hot funds to pay for this feasibility study to see if it's worth him investing in a site here. Okay, so yes, I've spoken with the attorney at the Texas Lodging Association. And there are cities that really need hotels that have used hot funds for feasibility study. And that's been approved. But the expenditures, he reminded me, any expenditure of hot funds has to be good for the hotels too, all the hotels. It can't just be one. And anyway, his name is Scott Jozlov. If anybody wants to call and speak with him. He basically wrote the law on the use of hot funds. So first of all, I guess my question is, I'm not really sure why we need another hotel. And why, you know, we have nine. And why weren't the hoteliers, or maybe it was just me, why weren't we included in any of these discussions? I mean, who knows better about, oh, and the reason for getting a new hotel is that they wanted to bring more business travelers to Rockdale. So who knows better?
Your time has ended.
Oh, that's it. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
And hoteliers weren't involved.
Thirty seconds to wrap up.
Okay. Hoteliers weren't involved in making this decision. Nor, I see, a tourism plan's been made and hotels weren't involved in that either. So I, I'm opposed to building a new hotel without us all working together. And for God's sake, can't we do that? Isn't that why y'all are here too?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rowan. Robin Story. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Are you sure you don't want to do this on the agenda item? Because you're on the agenda too.
You can have discussion on the agenda item if you want.
When we, when we talk about the agenda item, that'd be more appropriate.
Yeah, okay. So Ms. Story's going to pass on her request, Citizens Communications. Her item is actually an agenda item on the, for council tonight. So we'll give you the opportunity to speak during that agenda-minded discussion. We'll move down to Bob Burnett. Yes, sir. I'll go to the next person on the list. I can't read this name. Is it Don?
On Schrader.
Donald Schrader. Can't believe I couldn't read your name, Don.
I could tell y'all some stories about him if y'all want me to. I am Donald Schrader. My wife and I have lived here since 1965. We built our house on O'Kelly Road in seventy-one or seventy-two. We've lived there over fifty years. And right now, we feel like we live in a slump. I don't know how many of you have drove by or drove up it. One day, I was sitting out in the end of my driveway. We have a little table for my grandkids play, or great-grandkids. And two trucks come by and I literally could not see my neighbor's houses across the street. I'm kind of like this lady. We weren't told our road was going to be redone. I hadn't found anybody. So where's our communication on our City Council? I feel like we've been screwed, pardon my friend. But, uh, get emotional pretty easy. I'm sorry. But, uh, it's, it's got to the point that our property value has probably gone down in half. But I bet my city taxes don't go down in half, or they? We've raised our water up. Now I'm paying for some kind of box in my water meter, they call it. I can't remember what. I've lived there over fifty years and I never had to pay for anything like that. It looked like my meter would be paid for. But it's not only affecting my street, it's affecting Lynn Street. It's affecting the people on Yocley and down on Katy and all the way down to Brazos and further down. The dust, when the car comes by, it goes with it. And when they come this way, it goes toward Katy. So you've got the whole area up in a dust storm. But we need something done and we need it done now. It's pitiful. I've got great-grandkids that try to play out there and they can't. And I do have a few great-grandkids. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
Robert Dewister.
Yes, thank you. I would like to pass these photos for each of you to take a gander at that kind of fits in and illustrates what Mr. Schrader just talked about. When I took the piece of paper out of the mailbox indicating that we were going to have a new surface on O'Kelly, I was very glad. And everybody I talked with up and down the street was very glad to hear that also. I didn't know what chip seal meant, but I've since found out. Those of us who are here on O'Kelly, about eight of us, we appreciate your efforts, your personal investment, your time, your, your investment in terms of seeing Rockdale grow and feel more homey and so forth. And that's something that I appreciate very much. We're asking you to find a way to help this part of O'Kelly feel more like a home again. Every one of the citizens up and down this part of O'Kelly has told me that they liked the patchwork of asphalt that we had before, even though it was bumpy and every three or four months you all were patching the potholes. But it was much more pleasant to deal with than this chip seal with all of the dust. And, and in addition to the dust, when it rains or the tank truck comes over and waters the street, the road, the runoff runs into some of the driveways. And the residue of that dust and that runoff water coats and looks like a mess in the driveway. It's not easily washed off or blown off. I talked to my physician recently and told him I was having more sinus problems than usual. And I wondered if it could be the dust from the road. And he said, "It certainly could be." Whenever somebody drives over the road, the dust that swirls up behind the vehicle collects on the back of the windshield, the back window. And if you park, if we park our cars in the driveway freshly washed, within a day or two, they need to be washed again because of all the dust. We have, I consulted with four realtors on their opinion of what it would impact our houses in terms of resale. Not one of those four would say it reduced the value, but they did say it would make it more difficult to sell a house in that part of O'Kelly. So our request is, is that we work together to find some way to make this part of O'Kelly feel more homey and more welcoming and more attractive, not only for ourselves, but if it comes time to have to sell and make a move, that becomes more easily done. And thank you for listening and look forward to how we can work this out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have seven other people here from O'Kelly who may want to add. When should they add their comments?
We hear you loud and clear.
We hear you loud and clear.
We, you can all get up there and speak if you want. We know the problem exists. We hear you loud and clear. We're working on it. We're working on it diligently. A mistake was made via a conglomerate of things happening. We're tackling the problem head-on. So if you want to get up there and speak, you're welcome to. But we, we understand it and we appreciate y'all coming, but we truly do understand the problem.
And this is on the agenda again tonight.
And it is an agenda item tonight as well. Go ahead. I lost my phone. But we need it done. Y'all ain't told us when or how.
Understand.
It's, it's an agenda item tonight and, and we got to reach deep into the pockets to fix the problem. We understand the problem. It's a severe problem. We take it seriously. We don't have unlimited funds. That's not, I know that's not the answer you want to hear, but we are all working on the problem as actively and as efficiently and as effectively as we can.
And I, Council, I just want to share some thoughts with you on this before the next speaker gets up. I've heard from almost every one of those residents on that street through email or through face-to-face conversations. And what they're dealing with is not right. It's not an east-side repair road versus west-side repair road. Repairing this road, plain and simple, is doing what's right for the citizens that live on that road. And they've dealt with it long enough. And I concur with Mayor Pro Tim Perry. Yes, we made some mistakes. But by God, it's time for us to step up and fix the mistake. And I appreciate you. I appreciate you citizens coming to speak your voice tonight because I think it needs to be heard. And, but I did want to share my thoughts with Council regarding this issue. Justin Roman, you signed up to speak on item five B, but you will have the opportunity once that hits the agenda item. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'll move down to John Rush.
I was going to speak on two of them. Do I do that right now or when the agenda comes up?
So you have.
Seven A and ten A.
You'll just wait. You'll just wait, sir, till the agenda item?
That'll work.
Thank you. Nicole Argua.
Well, don't yield my time back to the only thing, because I'm also for ten J on 2003 O'Kelly. My only request is you guys send out all of these communications if there's closures, if there's, you know, major incidents happen. I'm just going to ask for an increase in communication from you guys on the impact to those on O'Kelly. Whatever the decision is tonight, I'm, hopefully it will also be positive. If you can just, you know, share your action plan, let us know when work's going to start, let us know when work's going to be done. That'd be really helpful for us. So just an increase in communication. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And what was your name again?
Nicole Aggie.
I apologize for mispronouncing you.
Oh, that's okay. It happens.
I should have known that last name. Okay, that completes our.
Did you want to go back to Bob or?
Bob, I apologize, sir.
No, that's all right.
You good?
Yes, sir. Okay. Item five, presentations. We'll receive a presentation from the airport board.
Hello, my name is Ed Guerrero. I live in Cameron, Texas. I'm a Rockdale Flying Tiger, meaning, those of you that aren't familiar with the Flying Tigers, it's a flying club based out of Rockdale. And the reason that I'm here, I come to talk to you guys about hangar development at, at the HH Caulfield Regional Airport. And I've got a presentation that's up on the screen now.
And I'm Darryl Phillips. I'm with Airport Innovative Solutions. I work with the city and the staff in consulting with the airport. And if there's any questions, I'll be glad to help answer that.
Next page. So what I'm here for is to talk about the city ultimately allowing me as a private investor to build hangar space and phases at the Rockdale Airport now. What I, what you're seeing here is a YouTube, or not a YouTube, sorry, a Google image from Google Maps. On the left side is how the, the hangars and the northeast side of the airport is structured currently. You've got two hangars. And I apologize, I didn't bring my, my pointer. But we currently have two hangars. Oh, there we go. We've got two. I guess the batteries are dead. Someone's pointing on the wall, yeah.
That's me.
That's, that's okay. We, I've only got. Oh, we got it, Darryl. We got it. So yeah, we've got, I've got two pictures here. The first one is how the airport is structured currently. We've got a total of three hangars, correction. This is the northeast side of the airport. We've got hangar one, which is the main hangar. And that's where the Flying Tigers Club is based out of now. We've got two airplanes there now. And there's others within that hangar as well. There's a second hangar that's leased out to an AMP, which is an aviation mechanic. And then off to the, you can't see it here. I kind of neglected to put it in, not intentionally. But on the northwest side of the airport, there's what I know as the Alcoa Hangar. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that or not. But so three hangars currently. This obviously is the runway, nine oh eight. And then you can't see it here, but seventy-seven is on the north side on top. So what I'm proposing, and this is, this is just a proposal, this is my, my preference, is building these hangars, anything in white. So this is, this would be a large hangar. And right now, we've got it, I've met with a gentleman that, this is what he does. He builds hangars for airports and he put this proposal together for me. As long with, Darryl helped me out with his feedback, obviously. But it's a hundred-by-hundred hangar. And then there's multiple T-hangers. T-hangers basically will house one single-engine airplane. And the, you know, this section is A, ten, and ten. And they vary in size. Like I said, this is just my proposal. It can change and vary depending on, on everybody's feedback in the city, obviously. And then everything in gray is something that, the, the infrastructure that would be required for, to build the actual hangars, you know, the ramps and, and the hardscape that's required to do all that. So again, my, my request is for the city to allow us, or to allow me to lease these spaces and build these hangars. And I'd obviously invest in this. Next slide, please. And I'm done with this. Thank you. So I've got some additional information to share regarding business justification. So as it stands now, we've got one gentleman that's interested in moving to Rockdale. He, he has a, a, a business that builds small airplanes, ultralights they're called. And he's living in Florida now. Him and his wife are from Texas originally. They're interested in moving back to Texas and they need a space to put their business in. So he's already approached Jimmy and myself about, about leasing some hangar space to bring his business to Rockdale. Other, other justifica, reasons for justifi, to build, justifications to build hangar space. So hangar space is limited. I don't know, I don't know how involved you guys are when it comes to the list of hangar space at the different airports that are here locally, the regional airports. But you call around and, I mean, most of them are eleven, you know, eleven-deep in terms of, of, you know, availability. But you call around, and I mean, most of them are 11, you know, 11-deep in terms of, of, you know, availability. And there's not a whole lot of there. Too many, too many guys like myself, they want to go out there and fly their planes, but nowhere to put them. And then the other thing is the current hangar configuration is not text dot compliant. And Darryl, I'm sure, could share more information on what that means. But there are, there are concerns with how the hangars are laid out currently. And then the last thing is community, community expansion, right? So that would help the, the city greatly to have, you know, bring new customers or new, new businesses to, to, to Rockdale and, you know, help with all that stuff. I got this now. So this is, like I said, this is my request. Now I got it to you in writing. So I'm asking for specifically five acres to develop hangars and develop in phases. Phase one would be the large hangar. And like I said, we've got somebody interested already. And fuel farm relocation. So the fuel farm, I don't know how, how familiar you guys, but there's a big tank with fuel in it that people come in and they fuel their planes up with. That, that would have to get relocated should the city decide to accept my proposal. Phase two, that would be continued development, and that would be the T-hangers. And I can go back if you guys need me to. So this would be phase one, and then phase two would be these hangars here.
You mentioned that the gas pump is on skids for this kind of proposal.
Yeah. Yeah, so that, right now, the gas farm, you can actually see it here. It's in this, this little white triangle or rectangle, excuse me, shaped thing. That could, that's on skids, so it can be relocated if it's necessary. And it will be necessary with, if you guys accept my proposal. So, phase one, large hangar and relocating of the farm. The first hangar would go to the individual that's interested. Phase two, so that'd be continued development of the T-hangers and/or box hangars. Like I said, my proposals, I'm, I'm flexible, you know, whatever works for everybody. Lease terms, these are obviously negotiable, but what I'd like, if it was, if, 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 if I could get my wish, 30 years with, with two five-year options at five cents per square foot of hangar space, and then lease abatement for the first five years to offset private development costs because I'd be funding the money to build these hangars. Commitments and deliverables, I put something together, just threw it out there. See, see what you guys thought. Obviously negotiable and up, you know, want y'all's feedback. So developer, which would be me, I'd come in with earnest money of $3,000 to the city of Rockdale with the commitment to construct, to start with, within the first two years of signing the agreement. City, city slash developer, this would be combined between myself and the city, provided you guys approve the, the proposal. Consult with tech stat to ensure project plans meet specifications. And Darryl, of course, would be able to provide some guidance on that as well. He's got a lot more information on, on how airports are laid out. And then, of course, collaborate on code compliance. And then there'd, there'd obviously be also some interaction between the city and tech stat themselves. Relocation of fuel farm, I'm assuming tech stat, and Darryl can correct me if I'm wrong here, would, would assist, you know, with funds or in some way, shape, or form with the relocation of the fuel farm we, we discussed previously. Then fund and develop hangar utilities. There'd be some sort of grants, we're assuming, that tech stat would help out with. Taxiway and ramp development, another, another grant is, would be available for that, is what I'm being told. And just so you guys know, you know, the, the grants are 90-10 split, so 90, the city comes up with 10% and 90% is funded by the, by tech stat. It's typically the way it works, is my understanding. These are my next steps. Establish, build, build team, reach agreement on ramp layout, define utility requirements, submit proposal, hangar design schedule for phase one, and determine parking requirements. And what that, what does that get the city? So the future potential, expansion of runway. So that's something that, the runway itself is, it's a great airport, but it is, it is small, so larger jets and whatnot don't have the ability to land there because they need more runway to take off and land. But if the city, you know, allows me to come in and spend my money to build these, these hangars, then that opens the, that opens it up for, for the city to go back to tech stat and say, hey, we need, we need more money to build a larger runway. And that goes into the additional tech stat fund, funding availability. And I already talked about new business startup and expansion. We've got one, maybe two, for sure one, that's interested in moving. And then you guys, the city would, would benefit from hangar lease and fuel revenue because every time a plane comes in, if you've got a better airport for planes to land, you're going to get more traffic and they're going to need fuel.
How large of expansion are you looking at?
So it's five acres total is what I'd need for now to build those, go back. Sorry. To build this here. And I'd, I'd lease just, you know, what's in white. There's obviously a lot more room here. You know, we could develop on the, and like, again, this is all negotiable. We could build on the, on the west side of the airport. There's some more sections down here that are available. This is an old barn that's there now.
And the runway, how large?
Um, Darryl? It's 3,000 now. Are you, are you asking how large?
The runway expansion.
Yeah, how much would we need, you think, to make it a more viable?
Your, your base is about 5,000 is what you'd like to have in the future. But this would get things going to start building the airport up to look at doing that in the future. Yes. Thank you.
If that runway was increased to that distance, what was, what would be the maximum size of planes that would be able to fly in and out of that?
Your small corporate aircraft, King Airs, some small Citation jet-type things, but not your bigger corporate jets, but 5,000 is a good number for a lot of the small and medium size.
So, based on your study and, and what you've looked into, would that increase the level of noise coming over our town in regards to our citizens and the aircraft? Or would they, would they still be on the same flight path as they are now?
Yes, they would be. Yes.
So how could it not increase the level of noise?
Well, most of your. Go ahead.
I was going to say, 90% of the wind is always out of the south, so you're landing to the south.
Yeah.
You're idling as you're coming in for that landing. You're not on roaring takeoff.
Yeah.
Okay.
And most of your aircraft are, they're like 72 decimals right now. They're not that, that big of a noise maker.
Okay.
Especially with your, your corporate aircraft. They're fan engines now where they were more jet.
Okay. Thank you. And I had one other question. I ha, I just, be very blunt, I have concerns about your two-year start time request. I think that's a very long time period to ask for. I'll just give you that feedback right now.
Understood. Again, it's negotiable.
Okay.
So, the, the guy that's currently the mechanic, that would go away, it looks like?
Correct. Yeah, this hangar would go away completely. This one would eventually need to go away because, and Gerald, and, excuse me, Darryl can provide more details. There's a line here, but I'll, I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, that, the, the red line there on the right here is your safety area. That's what tech stat would like to see, everything back behind that red line, your building structures to be incompatible with what tech stat requires. So, yes, the fuel farm and part of the big hangar and that second small hangar would need to be removed. Once he got this established, they would work with the city to get something established where they could relocate.
Does the increase in the potential air traffic coming in and out of that airport require increase in level of communications for those aircraft? Do they communicate amongst themselves?
Communication would be as it is now. It's just Unicom aircraft to aircraft. And you can always monitor that. If it gets to a certain level, then you might look at a control tire, but this airport would never see that.
Okay.
But ultimately, i- if it ever got to that, then tech stat would be involved in that, and there'd be funding for the city for that.
Yeah, there's, there's funding 90-10 on that.
Okay. Great.
Are you looking, so this is just a, a private venture? You're not looking for a joint venture of any sort?
No, sir, not at this time. Any other questions?
Counsel, any other questions? Great job. Thank you for your.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
So in regard to this, I will be, if, if counsel's okay, I will be working with the gentleman to put together some kind of lease agreement to bring back to y'all for discussion and consideration.
Fair enough. Thank you. No capital outlay from the city?
No, sir.
Okay. Good question. Item 5B, presentation from the East Bell Tap House post-event of the Rocktoberfest. Justin Roman.
Hello. My name is Justin Roman, one of the owners of the East Bell Tap House. Just want to say thank you again for approving our hot funds on behalf of myself and my business partner Cory Vornkoll and our family. Some general info, we have assumed attendance of over 1,000 people between Friday and Saturday. We will submit, tomorrow, we'll have everything over to Mr. Tim Kelty, our city manager. Everything will be, you know, crystal clear there. We had attendance from Bryan, College Station, Georgetown, Austin, Leander, Flugerville, Temple, Belton, Bastrop, Kyle, and San Marcos. We had about 30 vendors in attendance. We had eight live music events. And we were fundraising for the Mark Center, which we raised over $700 for. We received $10,000 from the hot funds, and we spent $9,815. So we'll have a check of $185 back to you guys tomorrow. And we had advert, and I'll go over a little bit of our budget here. We advertise in Waco and College Station heavily. And our website for Rocktoberfest had about 1,200 site visitors. About 800 or so were from people out of the area, so that was really nice to see that. Really cool. And we had, let's see here, we did Facebook ads, Instagram ads, and we had about five pretty big banners as well. We, on entertainment with all the music artists, we spent about $3,800. The advertising, which again was in Waco College Station, Facebook, Instagram, and banners around town, and, you know, flyers and all that kind of fun stuff. And that was $3,136. And merchandise, the shirts, Rocktoberfest shirt here, about $2,879 as well. We, let's see here. But again, we'll have everything condensed here for you and send it over tomorrow morning, if that's all right. Yep.
How did this compare to last year's event?
I think we were a lot more strategic. We had some more, last year I was in a car accident, so it was a really crazy time. I was out for like about two months, and my poor cousin Cory had to, you know, take it all on by himself, pretty much. So this time, it went a lot smoother. I feel last year, we, we did market a lot more on, on radio, which I feel like that helped. I believe we had a pretty good turnout, just about the same, I want to say. I had a lot more family come from out of town, and a lot of people from out of town came. I mean, from out of state, flying and stuff like that. But I think overall, this was more successful in the terms of just, uh, just being very strategic with our time and our effort and our marketing and all those things. So I, I'm really happy with our outcome.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Does the, the city ask for grid nights in part of the report? I mean, grid nights, hot funds are supposed to be spent.
So I understand that will be, should be part of the report.
Okay.
That's one of the requirements to meet for the hot funds.
Okay. Thank you.
I will forward that report out to counsel.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel?
I'd just like to add, aside from this event that y'all had, I was out of town, I wasn't able to make it. But I just want to thank you once again for investing on our east side. It's brought so much life to, to our town in general, but especially the east side. So just thank you again to you and your team.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job.
We have a pretty strong community out there. Everybody's had a great time. It was a lot of fun. So I appreciate that.
Thank you for your contributions to the Mark Center as well.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
I love it. Family-friendly.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Justin. Thank you.
Okay.
Counsel, any other questions? Thank you. Item 5C, presentation on the Tourism Committee about Tourism Strategic Plan. Jim?
Evening, everybody. How are y'all?
Good.
Good. So just for the record, I'm Jim Gibson. I'm the Economic Development Director over at the MDD. And to give a, well, first off, I just want to tell y'all, on Wednesday, we are having our luncheon learn, and I don't know if any of y'all have RSVP'd, but if you are in town and available and want to sit with me and Bob and share a sandwich, please come by the, the MDD office. 134 North Main. All right. So a little bit of background on this tourism deal. It was roughly about a year ago that came to you guys on the council just to talk about tourism in general. And if y'all remember where we left it was, we said that we would come up with some kind of a plan of how to do tourism and then come back to the council with some recommendations. Shortly after that, we put together, it was a subcommittee of the MDD, so it's not a city committee, but it's a MDD subcommittee. And it consisted of downtown retailers. Actually, it was Cory from the Tap House was there, as well as Megan's from the bookstore. We had a local artist able to participate, a hospitality executive, a different community organization, and then someone who does events professionally for other cities close by who just happens to live in Rockdale. So all in all, there was about six of us who made up this subcommittee. And we had a number of different meetings throughout the end of last year, first part of this year. And the end result is the document that is in your packet. And so we took a really deep dive into Rockdale, looking at some of the, the data, some of the placer data that we have access to that, that we pay for. And that's the cell phone tracking stuff, if you guys are familiar with that. It's really, really cool stuff. And so we just had a series of meetings. We looked over the data. We looked at a number of different things, and this document is what we came up with. So, to just recap, I'm not going to go through everything in that document. But why are we doing this? Well, really, there's, in big picture, three different reasons. The first one is obviously the economic development part. Tourism, is that a part of economic development? Some people say yes, some people say no. I, I would argue that it is. It's just not the most effective way to do economic development. There's other ways that get, get a little more mileage out of your efforts. So there, there is that part. But also, by having more of a focus and emphasis on having events, especially those targeted for downtown, it starts to generate that foot traffic. And theoretically, if you have more foot traffic in, in a downtown area, businesses will follow the foot traffic. So that was another aspect that we were trying to encourage. There is an element of talent attraction with a tourism program. This one, you'll just have to indulge me a little bit while I try to explain it. One thing that we have to understand is that talent is mobile. Talent can live anywhere they want, as long as they're willing to commute a certain distance to their job. We have a, we are within a commuting distance of Samsung now. It's about 25 minutes away. And so anyone working at Samsung is a potential Rockdale resident, bottom line. And so there are things that, that we can do as a community to attract that talent, to choose Rockdale over someplace else. And so a tourism program is, it's a, it's a way to just introduce people to the town, gives them a reason to, to stop by and visit and experience the community. Then they start to explore other aspects of the community, the good schools, affordable housing. And then, you know, you never know, they may decide to actually invest here and buy a house. And then lastly is the social capital aspect. There, one of the things about having a community event is that it is a reason for the community to come together. I think it's, this coming weekend is the fair. That's about 13,000 and a half people that, that come to Rockdale. Over the course of that, yes, Bob, that's right. 13,500 people will come visit Rockdale, or they'll, they'll go to the fair. And so a lot of those folks are locals, a lot of them are from out of town. And so they, that, so it's a way to introduce Rockdale, to, to, gives them a reason to come here. So some different aspects and elements of this, of this document. We looked at the market analysis and why people come to Rockdale right now. We looked at where they come from, which was a very interesting dive into the data, that if you look at Austin, there is a swath of North Austin, pretty much running from Round Rock and Highway 79, south to Toll Road 45, going, running east-west, that there's this east-west band. This is where visitors to Rockdale come from. So they don't really come from South Austin. And once you get to Georgetown, they, they don't visit Rockdale. So that also helps us to understand our target market. It also helps us to understand how best to reach those people. And we just focus in on like what they're. And we just focus in on like what their likes are, and we can be more strategic about how we build this program. We looked at our competitor communities, I think there's probably ten or twelve of them in that report. And we looked at how we measure up against these other competitors. We also looked at our community assets, what are different assets within the community that can be leveraged to serve a tourist program. Now, I was introduced to this concept of different capitals, and that every community has these different capitals. Not like a capital, like a building where the president is, but like social capital, that's capital with an O, capital with an A. And so we tried to look at doing this tourism program through the lens of these capitals. And there's food, people will drive great distances to go get a good, to go eat good food. Coming from East Texas, it is nothing not unheard of for people to drive forty, fifty miles for a good steak. Historic capital, you want to use your local history to try to leverage that and get people to come here. You have aesthetic art, people enjoy appreciating art. Geographic slash physical, that's mountains, rivers, lakes, things like that. That's something that Rockdale doesn't have a lot of, you know, it's not like we're Marble Falls, where we have a river, or there's a big mountain. And then you have social, cultural and spiritual. And so instead of just saying, hey, let's just come up with a list of a bunch of different parties and events that we can have throughout the year, let's try to leverage our capitals so that the events that we do have carry a little more meaning, and then that it engages the community and engages our visitors. Lastly, we did a SWOT analysis, where we looked at our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And then lastly, and this is kind of where we left off, is on the implementation. So we have an idea of where we want to go, we have a new city manager, we have a new mayor. And I think at this point, I would just ask that y'all give us some leeway to kind of figure out how we're going to actually breathe this into reality. So with that, I will stop to see if y'all have any questions.
This is great.
Thank you.
I loved it.
You named two people, and then the next four you left without names. Are you free to share?
Sure, I'll share.
Who those other people were?
So there was...
And what their specialty was.
So Joyce Dally was our experienced hospitality executive. Patty Thomas was our artist. She used, she's, she's either about to move or she's already moved, but, so that was our local artist. Let me see here a second. Oh, and Kathleen Watson from the Historical Commission, Historic Society. And then the one who does events is a resident named Sharon Thomas. Sharon.
She's the tourism director and marketing for?
Georgetown, yes.
Wasn't there discussion a couple months back about hiring a tourism person that would be split between the MDD and the city? The financing of that person?
Potentially.
That hasn't gone anywhere yet.
No, sir.
It hasn't happened yet. We do have money budgeted for that person, and Jim and I have had conversations about how that would be structured. So we are looking at moving in that direction here pretty quickly.
Okay.
Council, any other questions for Jim? Thank you, Jim.
Alright, thank you all.
Appreciate the presentation.
Yes.
Moving on to our consent agenda, council, any questions regarding the consent agenda? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as written. Dave?
Just a typo, in the minutes, that was Leah Thomason, T-H-O-M-A-S-O-N, and it's written as Thompson.
Is that it?
Duly noted. Council, any other questions or concerns, consent agenda? Anything else, Dave? Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as corrected.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda with the amendment that Dave mentioned, please.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign, motion passes. We're going to move on to the next item. However, before we start the public hearing, with council's consent, I'm going to move item ten G, Ms. Story, up to this spot. And then I'm going to move behind her, item ten J, our discussion on O'Kelly Street. That way these folks don't have to sit in this room all night and listen to me ramble.
That way they could eat some dinner, hopefully.
Yeah. Ms. Story?
I don't do this, so I'm nervous, and I'm going to read what I want to say.
You're doing good already.
Alrighty.
I'm Robbie Story, and I'm applying for a variance to add an additional building to our lot. Our lot is approximately half an acre. The building was originally meant to be a surprise for my husband, from our kids and myself. My husband, Tim, has stage four prostate cancer. And although he's doing well with his treatments, he's exhausted all the time, and he can't stay at work a full day. So the thought was partially to move a building in where he could have a quiet place to work and rest as he's able. The other part of the gift is that my husband is very musical. He plays, hears music and he plays, he can play any instrument. He has guitars, he has mandolin keyboards, he has things in boxes that have sat in there for years because he has nowhere to go. So the building was also meant to be a place that was for my husband to also be able to go. And we felt like it would be good for him. And mostly... Mostly because we don't want to look back and say we should have done this when we had the opportunity. The first page of the bill that you have is the type of building that we're wanting to put in. The second page, I believe, is measurements, the door, it's a single door, not a double door. There's a window on either side of the door. It has a loft. I have four kids and a grandson, they all come home on the holidays. But we also have about eight more kids that come and stay with us during the holidays. So we would use the loft in the building for some of those kids to come and stay. If we sold our property, the building would go with us. I was unaware that you were only allowed one building per lot. We have a building that houses lawn mowers and wood tools. And the second building we have houses all of the pixels that we use at Christmas time on the side of our building. So this would be a third building on the half acre lot.
Including your home?
Including our home. Also, the building is not taller than our roof, it's shorter. So it wouldn't, we also have a gated private fence all the way around our property. So you would probably only see the top portion of that building from the roof. That's, that's it.
Have you had any conversation with your neighbors regarding this?
I tried to do that this weekend. My neighbors on the corner were in agreement that I could have it. My neighbor Keith Pezal was gone this weekend, so was Mr. David across the street, and Kelly wasn't home. But Kelly and I have talked different times and she never seemed to have a problem with anything. But I would, again, talk to them as well.
Any other thing you'd like to add, Robin?
No, I just appreciate your time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Counselor, you did great.
I got a question for you, Robin, before you leave. And I guess it would be for Ben as well. Have you looked, is the... The problem is that it's a portable structure, there's room on the property from setbacks and that sort of thing to do. I know the economics are different. But a permanent structure, would it fit on the, on the property? The problem comes into existence because it's portable and it doesn't meet the rules that we have in place, is that correct?
Yeah, your zoning out there. It's strictly a zoning requirement, so the zoning code allows for one carport, one garage and one accessory structure. They have sufficient room, they don't increase their purpose coverage upon what they're allowed. It's just strictly a number that they have to meet, that they cannot meet.
Okay.
They already have, how many? They have two existing that are grandfathered in that do not need a variance. They just cannot add another without a variance.
Gotcha. And I, in reading, I guess the...
Oh, the back picture, I'm sorry, I just swear we got...
The, well, I think I saw there would be a restroom in it as well.
We had talked about putting a small restroom in the corner.
Okay. And I don't know if I need to recuse myself from this or not, Robin is my wife's half-sister. So, family ties in there somehow.
That's a half.
But I'll, whether I accuse myself or not, I'll still put my two cents in, so. Expect you to.
Never shy words.
I have a question for you, just for clarification here. This variance, could we just do it for this address, this one time, because it's extenuating circumstances? Or we would have to change?
So the variance request is by address, so it comes by request. So if you were to grant it, it would only be for Robin's property at 2008 Highland? It'd only be for that accessory structure?
Gotcha.
So you're not, you're not doing a code amendment? What a variance is, is they can't meet your code, and so there's a list of requirements in your memo that's supposed to be met upon approval? And then if you grant that, it's specifically for that property for that use?
Right, okay.
Thank you, good question, thank you.
Very fine, okay, very good. Well, me personally, you know, my heart goes out to you, Ms. Story, and your family, and your amazing wife for coming up here and advocating for this, I love that. I personally would like to allow this to happen for this family, especially if the neighbors are okay with it.
So BBW is here, and I was just talking to her, she, there's an option that she, do you have that? Do you want to address that?
Hi. Let me pop up here.
For those who don't know, Barbara is our city attorney.
What I might recommend is that you do what we call a conditional use. And as long as that condition is there for the variance, it would still be a variance from the current, or your current ordinances. But it would be based upon a conditional use, as long as that use was there and you were using it for that, then it would be allowed. But if it ever ceased, it would go away. So you would need to then remove the building and remove, you know, whatever at that point, or whomever was going to move in there. But that might be a way that it could be accommodating to the family right now. And then if not necessary, at some point, if you moved or did whatever, then that use would go absolutely away.
Thank you, Barbara, appreciate that.
What Barbara said.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion for conditional use, a variance under conditional use.
Motion for a variance of conditional use for item ten G.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, council, is there any discussion? Being no discussion, we'll vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Yes, ma'am? Item ten, let's see, ten J, which I moved up, consider take any necessary action for consideration of the cost for new surface material on O'Kelly Street. Gerald? Andy, you got my picture up? So for the, I'll just reference my photo here, this was one of the photos, you can see the dust on the road. This was a gentleman that actually has his home for sale on O'Kelly Street right now. Some of the communications he and I have had through email, this is one of the photos, he emailed me. This was obviously shortly after a vehicle passed by his home there. So I just wanted another visual for council to see. Counsel, I think you know my energy around this item, so I'm going to let Gerald speak.
I think we've decided that across the city, as you said earlier, that we want to look for a better system for upgrading our roads as we go forward. I have quotes from both Austin Paving, which you see is thirty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Alpha paving?
Alpha, excuse me, alpha paving. That's a turnkey operation, they'll come in here and make sure the road's in good shape, sweep it, clean it, do everything that you need to, and that's why that cost is so expensive. DIJ Construction did an excellent job, when they do a lot of work for the county and the state, and they put the overlay from just outside City Hall down forty-seven south. And they, we're not excited about coming and doing a small job because it costs them more than it's worth, but they gave us a price at twenty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars to come in here and do that section of road. So we have to clean it up, we have to get it ready. I'm not sure as far as the, how it's going to look off of a chip seal road like we've done versus a state highway, but they have the opportunity to do the same thing they've done out here.
Gerald, question, if I may, basically your professional opinion, which option would fit better with the current topping that's on that surface that's on that road?
Let me chime in. So chip seal, chip seal is oil and rock. Oil's going to stick to whatever it can stick to. My concern, if we, and what y'all have, y'all have heard it called chip seal, that wasn't chip seal.
Not at all.
Twice, so it wasn't, so we'll leave it at that. So oil is only going to stick to what it can stick to, and it's only as good as what it's sticking to. We've already swept this street multiple times, we've washed it multiple times. It is obviously continuing to deteriorate and come loose. So whatever you stick to that is a Band-Aid, it's gonna come loose. So my opinion, this oil and chip seal, when you did it out here on the highway, you had a good highway that you're sticking it to. We're not sticking to a highway over here. I'm concerned that we're throwing good money after bad. I understand it's, what, everything beyond this is more expensive, I get that. And I don't have that money in my pocket either, but we also don't have the money to do it again two years from now.
There's also a third option that we talked about at the last meeting, and that was Vulcan, I forget.
I have never received anything from anybody on Vulcan, I've tried to get a hold of them.
The county would apply it, and they've used it over in Gauze. Gerald and I went over and looked at that, it was done about five years ago. It looked pretty weathered and there was some pitting in it. I don't know that I would recommend that, but that looked more like an asphalt street. I don't know what it would look like when it was brand new, or with the volume of traffic that we have on, on O'Kelly.
They're all going to look great when they're brand new. It's the longevity of it that I'm concerned with, of oil sticking to dirt that's going to turn loose.
Well, the other two options besides Vulcan, which is a company out of Alabama, and they make this emulsion that's supposed to be really good, is to use cold mix. And the last time we met, I asked you if you had a chance to go look at Ramsey and look at what we have over there. That was the very first zip street that we did when we got our, our machine. And we talked about it also with the last meeting, and it looks really good. But it is expensive, it's going to cost, and I haven't run the numbers because we haven't been talking about doing it that way. And then, of course, the last is to put a hot mix on the street. And the budget... on the street. And the budget, you asked me a question, and in my best personal and professional opinion, I think the alpha, uh, or, uh, alpha paving is probably the most likely of the two to work longer term, but the other one, we see the results of it, but like Mr. Perry said, uh, who knows what it's gonna do on that, that road that's been coated actually three times and rolled and more rock and more stuff's been put on it, so.
Is there any kind of guarantee or warranty with the, uh, alpha paving quote?
Uh, I, I put the quote in the, uh, packet, uh, but I don't remember there being a, uh, a guarantee of any kind.
You gentlemen don't happen to be with alpha paving, do you? I don't recognize these two faces when I was asking.
I agree with what both the mayor, mayor protests. This is something we need to address now. My concern with Vulcan is it's, you know, we're gonna have to go back and get numbers. We're gonna have to go back and bring this back to the table. I think this is something that needs to be addressed.
Does alpha have a, a warranty, uh, a guarantee?
Again, I, I put the, um, the quote in there, but I, I don't think so, but I can talk to them.
Because they, they, they call it a chip seal as well, which is a.
It is, but they say the same thing as you do on, um, O'Kelly. It's not a chip seal. In their opinion, that, that's not.
It's not a chip seal, that's.
I'd like to say something. Mayor Ward's mentioned something that maybe I'm hypersensitive, but he said this isn't an east-west thing, and it sure isn't an east-west thing. But I did speak at the last meeting and I will reiterate today that having lived on the east side for twelve years and had, having tires damaged, having my front end alignment jacked up because of the condition of some of the streets on the east side, I just, I, 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 I want this to be taken care of. But we somehow, again, I'm sorry, um, it's, I know it's not an east-west thing, so I hope that that was not an implication. Um, I, I, this needs to be taken care of, but I feel for the east side residents who have to daily go down some of these stretches of highway where you have to almost come to a stop because you don't have options, safe options, to take to get through the hole.
Right, and you know, if I could add to that, again, you know, we represent the city both east and west, but because I do live on the east side and I have family on the east side and friends on the east side, I mean, it's more than just dirt that's bothering them. It's grandmas are taking a walk and falling and breaking their leg and kids are trying to ride their bike, but they fall because of the potholes. So it's not that it's, I'm sensitive to it, and yes, I agree that it needs to be done. If we're gonna do it, just go ahead and get it done. I just wanted to recall this when it comes to redoing more roads, that we've already done this one on O'Kelly. I mean, because we're all taxpayers here, right?
So, I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent agree. The problem we have here is what they had, what we took away from them was better than what we gave them back.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Agreed, agreed. And, and I agree that we need to fix it.
Points well taken.
No hard feelings.
Yes, sir, Mr. Schrader.
You ought to have more roads than O'Kelly or the east side. When you leave here, go out and drive on Red Bud.
Go drive fast.
It's actually a fine neighborhood in Rockdale, but they've got to drop off where the tree roots have put their scene out this high.
That's a bad one, too.
Say you got fifty streets in Rockdale that need to be repaid, so you better get your budget in line.
And I, I, I feel bad for all of this. I mean, I think everybody does. Um, but the council has been doing everything it can to correct forty or fifty years of neglect in water pipes and roads and bringing the city up to a level that is to twenty-twenty-four. And it's, it's a juggling act.
But one thing, who approved of to start on O'Kelly, to tear up the road?
Well, they didn't. We've been doing this for three years. This is, this is. Well, but you said starting on O'Kelly. Um, so we've been doing this for three years and we've done a bunch of streets, uh, in town. I think this is like the ninth or tenth that we've done. And, and so. I will, real quick, if you don't mind, let me finish. Um, earlier in the year, some of the council members said that O'Kelly needed to be done. And I was instructed to do it. We talked about putting chips, I mean, uh, cold mix in there, but we went with what we've been doing all along for three years since we've had that, uh, zipper. And so it was a, it was a city decision to do that, and that's.
And you knew the road was going to look like what it looks like, what it looked like?
This looks like the other streets we've done over the last three years because that is what financial, uh, funding we had through our budget.
Yeah, but you've got to realize the taxes that we pay.
I, I, I'm just telling you the situation. I, I don't, I don't want to argue with you because you're right. It's bad. I, I'm sorry.
So, let's, knowing that chip seal is, is a Band-Aid on top, what are our options to fix it? I don't want to see Mr. Schrader in here two years from now. I, I wanna, I wanna fix it one time and be done with it. Do we have, I don't feel like we have that proposal in front of us to fix it right one time. Do we?
Not, not with, not, not with a eighty percent surety, no.
That's what I want to see and that's what I want to do, and I want to do it quickly and not, and learn from this and not make this mistake again. Correct. We don't have the money to fix it one time. We damn sure don't have the money to fix it two or three times. So that, that's personally what I would like to see as quickly as possible, how to fix this thing one time and be done with it. Would you like to put that in the form of a motion? I'd like to put that in. Tim, you, you were wanting to say something when I chimed in.
Yes, I would just say that, you know, you're, it's correct that, that, the calling that chip seal is mistake. Because that's, I've, I've done, I've seen chip seal, chip seal done in cities for a lot of years and I've never seen a road that looks like that or reacts like that. And I don't even think some of the other streets that we've done chip seal are as bad as O'Kelly is. And I don't, maybe, I don't know what happened. That's why we went back because of the fact that I thought there was a, a, they did it incorrectly. That's why we had them redo it. So basically, we have, you know, obviously in, in reconstructing streets, there's a, there are options and they all have different price tags. We don't have a price tag for going full-depth asphalt or an over, asphalt overlay. You know, Mr., uh, Gerald has talked about doing the, uh, the cold mix, which has held up very well over there on the street that, next to the, the stadium. You know, so there's a lot of different options and they're just gonna cost different amounts. We have seventy thousand dollars in the budget right now for streets. I am gonna have to come back to council because I'm not gonna recommend doing any more with the county through chip seal. So we are gonna have to budget additional money. We're gonna have to actually pull from reserve to do a significant amount of streets and, um, you know, like I talked about at the last meeting, we do have the, um, street inventory nearly ready to present probably next month. But if we want to act now, I have authority to spend up to fifty thousand dollars without coming back to council. I don't like to do that because it, it, it's a lot of money. I, we can, I can work with Gerald to come up with a solution, spend less than that. If, if council's okay with that, as long as it's up, uh, a warranted and we have the assurance that it's gonna last and, and is gonna be an attractive street and not, and significantly better than what they have, then we're not gonna be dealing with this again while I'm city manager.
The only, and, and I'm bound with that. The only thing that I want to say to that is if we overlay, remember we're changing elevation and we're adding an inch and a half of, of asphalt to the top of it. Make sure we're not creating drainage problems. I don't want to hear Mr. Schrader say, well, now the water can't get out on the street. It's coming in my driveway. I'm just saying, I don't want to exaggerate.
And that presents a problem. That presents a problem because that's a non-curb street.
Exactly.
And, um, you know, when we did our, uh, Ramsey job, the project over there with the, we got it same as the height of the, of the curb and it worked out real well. That's another issue with O'Kelly when you try to do something with hot mix or what we would do with the cold mix.
So I don't know how, what the depth of the total profile of the existing street is. Mr. Brunson might, might have better understanding, but I, I know that they've put a couple of inches and then a couple of inches with the, with the two most recent.
We probably got at least six inches there now with what we did, did and what we put on top of it since.
Probably gonna have to have the existing surface ripped up, milled down.
We could take two inches off the top.
Right.
And, and do a, do an overlay. And if it's gonna be more than fifty thousand dollars, it is gonna have to come back to y'all.
Counsel, any opposition to giving our city manager the authority to proceed with what he recommended?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to approve our city manager to proceed up to fifty thousand dollars worth of money invested in repairing this O'Kelly Street in Rockdale, Texas. There a second?
I will second it.
Motion is second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Some kind of warranty to go along with it from whoever does it. Any other discussion? Being now, we'll vote all in favor of motion signify by raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel, for all your input. I sincerely appreciate it and I agree that, Tim, we definitely need to focus our budget and expedite, but focus our budget. Next budget on roads on both sides of the city because we've got a lot of opportunities that we discussed tonight.
And we will move forward with it as quickly as we can and try to keep the folks out there informed as to when things are happening, will happen.
Okay.
Mr. Brunson, thank you very much for that information.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank y'all.
Could I ask one question on the ordinances? Nine A, is that gonna be anything done with that that I need to spend on?
That's being discussed tonight. Yes, ma'am. I don't know if, I can't say if action will be taken on it. I can't speak for council, so I don't know if action will be taken. That's council's authority to choose to or not choose to take action, so. Uh, that item is on the agenda to be discussed tonight. Okay, moving on to, uh, our public hearing, item seven A. Conduct a public hearing for property, uh, located. I'm not gonna read the address along Texas Street to change zoning classification from A agricultural to R one pud, single family, single-family residential, uh, planned unit development. Doug, is this something you, or Tim? Ben?
I'm sorry.
I'll take over. This is the public hearing that's required by state law when you have a zone change request. And so citizens within two hundred feet of this proposed zone change, you'll see the image on the screen, have all been notified. We have had not received any opposition, but this is a chance where if anybody's here to speak, that they can speak on it. You'll see an ordinance later on in your packet. You also get a presentation from Philip and his partner Dan on what they're proposing.
Thank you, Ben. And I, I needed to say that this public hearing was officially opened at six fifty-two PM. Counsel, any discussion?
It's interesting.
How are those people contacted?
I was gonna say, I didn't get a letter and I live right there.
So you're outside of that radius, believe it or not?
I'm not in the peak.
How they're required to be notified is they're notified by mail. And they have a chance to either send that mail back with comments of for or against. P and Z holds a public hearing that they can attend, and they can also attend this public hearing where they can verbally express that they're for or against.
Thank you for that answer. Counsel, any other questions? Did you have any mail come back?
We had a couple of letters bounce back, which is a typical.
No responses.
No responses?
Right. The mailing address that the county sends taxes to was incorrect or no longer valid.
Thank you. Counsel, did you have any questions for Mr. Bargus? He's here also. No.
I'm curious as to how much, uh, additional traffic this is going to bring to a couple of streets, Texas Street and East Belton that are, you know, they're problematic. And so for people to get to a new attractive subdivision of, of homes, I'm just a little concerned about their pathway there.
Sure. So we did a traffic study that the city has as part of our submittal, uh, and they, stop me if you're gonna fade out on me because traffic studies are really boring. So they, there's a level of service that, uh, they have to go by, A through F. And so the, there's not a lot of existing traffic on the streets as far as a traffic study is concerned. And so the number of cars that are going to be added to don't require any sort of upgrade to the city system. They do recommend, of course, rebuilding the streets, uh, to, you know, just to a standard eleven or twelve foot wide, you know, two lanes, which is kinda obvious if you've been out there. And so, uh, as part of our proposal, we're going to do that. Even though we don't really have a requirement to do it, that's just something we're gonna do as part of the negotiation, give and take with the city.
I would say we need another stop sign there, too.
On Texas?
On Texas, yeah.
On Texas Street, you're gonna do that?
And Belton.
Belton, all the way Belton, like from the school down?
No. But thanks for asking. So to the extent, to the extent of our property.
To make sure my old ears did not miss here. So East Belton and Texas would have upgrades that are on your dime.
Okay.
Starting where on Belton?
Uh, at Lee, yeah, at Lee Street, which is, it's really not even a paved road at this point. It's just a, but it is a dedicated right-of-way. So from there around north to the north extent of our property on Texas.
So I believe, uh, this public hearing ties to, uh, seven ties to nine.
It's seven A, nine E.
Ten A. What about ten A?
And ten A.
They all tie together. They all tie together.
But this is just a public hearing for the change from.
The pud.
For the pud.
And just so you're aware, so a planned unit development will adjust the zoning requirements. We have standard zoning for, for development in the city. When a development is asking to do something different, um, they would, they can do that under the, a planned unit development, which requires a public hearing with a notice of people. So there are, are asking for a number of, of things in that pud that are not conventional. That's why we have to have it.
And, and so this will be changed to residential?
It's currently zoned residential, but the base zoning is in fact our. Oh, I'm sorry, agriculture. I apologize. Yes, it would be, it would be rezoned to a base zoning of our.
R one B U D.
R one with residential with the public utility or planned unit development.
And does that, how, how does lot size, uh, come into, I'll tell you where I'm coming from. I feel like in the last two years, we've been taking lots and shrinking them down, shrinking them down. So that we can maximize the number of houses, uh, that can get onto these lots. And I'm concerned that we're building a community of little bitty jammed-in houses, uh, in, around. So what, what would lot size, how's lot size decided in this?
So in traditional R one zoning, we require seventy-five foot lot, lot width. And so this is requesting thirty, both thirty and forty foot lot widths for this development.
So they're small lots. Um, I will speak from my planning background for a second on why staff is not recommending against this. There is a commonality. You can go to any city in Texas and you can ask them what their problems are, and one of them is gonna be housing. And so what they say in planning world is there's a missing middle housing. And so this will fill some of that gap that the community needs. We can speak offline on some renting issues I've come across on prices for units that are not worth that. And so from a professional recommendation I met with Tim, we've met with the developers multiple times. We recommend approval for this one time. You know, we'll have that discussion, uh, per basis if more developers come in for smaller lot sizes. But this is a unique opportunity that other cities don't necessarily get at times for this middle housing that's missing.
So how big of a, how big of a house?
So how big of a, how big of a house, how mu, what square footage do you get on a lot like that?
We'll get to that later on. This is the public hearing.
You will get those answers. There's also gonna be a presentation where you'll see what they're proposed to look like. You'll get what the estimate of those houses are gonna cost citizens as well as sizes, but that will be a presentation you'll see that we can wait on. I don't know if there's anybody here representing that wants to speak on the public hearing opposed or against, but you'll see this later on if you wanna talk about this.
Damn. So how many feet did you say you had to be from the development in order to get noticed?
So you had to be 200 feet from the property lines from that development and so you were just outside of that. I can show you the map that I keep on file.
No, I have it on my phone and I thought I was there, but yeah.
Yeah.
Any other items relative to the public hearing? Counsel? Tim, anything? Ben, anything else? Close the public hearing at 7:00 PM. Item eight is conduct a workshop for discussion regarding promotion of volunteerism and identification of priorities in areas of need. Tim, you and Councilman Melton?
Sure. And, and Councilman, if you'd like, I can start. So I get a call from Councilman Melton regarding some concerns about some elderly homeowners potentially having to maintain alleyways behind the house and that, their homes and the city of Rockdale follows every other city and state law in, in that regard. But that doesn't eliminate the fact that there are people that need help. And so that's why we had, had that discussion, or why we're having that discussion. He mentioned the fact that his Earth Day crew really is two people and they're getting older. But they have, they have other volunteers on that day that they, that they appreciate, but there is a real need for more people to step forward. And so Mayor Rodham and Councilman Melton thought it would be a good idea for the council to have a discussion, brainstorm, so to speak, on how potentially to make that happen.
So I, I will say, I, I do my fair share of volunteering for this and that and it gets old. It gets cumbersome and gets tired. Dave, you know where that, you, you, and everybody on here does it and it gets old. So one of the things that I've always wondered is why, even just the coordination of that is, is very time consuming. Why couldn't the city hire a volunteer coordinator? And I'm saying that's a paid position, but if that paid position is paid a part-time salary to do that and they, in return, they get a full-time group of people that are willing to volunteer, service groups, Boy Scouts, all the things at the school, whoever they might be. If they can orchestrate a steady stream of that, that pays for itself 10 times over and, and it, and it gets these kids the hours that they need, probation, community service, all of those people, it gives them an avenue to do what they need to do, but it doesn't put the burden on another, on a volunteer to have to orchestrate that. If we're gonna paint parks of the swings, swings at the park next week and I go out and find a group to do that, next thing I gotta do is I gotta go get paintbrushes, I gotta go get this, I gotta go get this. So instead of me having to go do this, that would be that person's job is to come up with what the, what needs to be done, find the group to do it and implement it where you're not having a volunteer that's having to do that because the same volunteers do it over and over and over again. And I'm tired. So I, I think that, and, and I don't know, but I would think that both the, the Rockdale judge, the county judge could absolutely use a, or take advantage of an opportunity to hand out some community service. These people don't wanna pay their fines? Get your paintbrush out. Don't, don't tell me that you don't have the money to do it, we'll give you an avenue to work it off. But that takes coordination and that takes.
Oversight.
Oversight.
And they could, they could, those volunteers could work on private property with the permission.
They could do also, the, it's, it's, it's unlimited amount of things that they could work on and do. And, and, and use that free labor, but don't expect the coordination piece of it to be free.
I think that's a brilliant idea, Mayor.
It's not mine. It's, it's something Dave and I talked about a while back.
I think that's the most brilliant, because I think there's a lot of people out there that do want to volunteer, but it takes that organization that you're seeing.
When we talk about funding of a position, because I agree, we, we're talking about hiring a new person and I know that that job description is probably already pretty full, but is it something for that? But I also think we sometimes miss out on the talent that might be available through internship programs, students at ET, or at Texas A&amp;M University, students at Temple College, who maybe could be hired part-time as our volunteer coordinator, something that they get academic credit for, something that they hopefully also could get financial pay for. I don't know what, how we could package something, but if, if we don't have the person here, could, could we partner with one of the schools and find a student needing an internship? I think that would be a very viable task to give someone.
We have some brilliant students that could probably definitely do it.
There's, I used, when I was fire chief for 12 years, I couldn't tell you how many people I oversaw down at the fire station doing community service and it takes somebody to oversee them and commit to overseeing them. This may be a crazy thought, but it's just a thought. I'm gonna throw it out there. We just recently cut our city judge back to part-time. Is it a possibility or consideration to, now that since we have our city judge back to part-time, add some time to his duties and allow him to oversee community service work on some of these projects like this? To have that person who understands community service and who understands how to manage people?
Whoever it is, it's, it, the, the, the reality of the bulk of the work is, that's weekends. That's, that's when the volunteering can happen. Is there Saturdays and some, some Sundays?
Evenings, yeah.
But, so.
And, and it would be nice if we had someone who could market the opportunities in a way that people would know, like if I knew there was a need that someone in my neighborhood had, I might be inclined if I knew about it. I don't always know about it. And, and so when I see it or hear it, it's usually be, it's from, it's from people who will only complain, but will never step up and do.
And that person could also coordinate the intake of requests for, for that volunteer service.
And we have to be careful on the, on the private side that I'm not back there mowing Ward Rodham's yard because Ward doesn't wanna mow it. You know, you have to have that balance and you have to have that person that, that is smart enough to figure out, wait a minute, we're doing this because this guy's a cheapskate, not because he needs help.
And we also need to be careful that we frame this in a way that does not in any way take away or insult our public works people. Couple of years ago for Earth Day, Mr. Scott Starnes power washed the administration building for the ISD and this building, but the question that came was, well, why is Scott Starnes having to do this? Shouldn't the city be able to do that? So we, I think there's, there's some ways in which we need to make sure we're keeping progress and projects done out there so that people know, you know, they're not sitting on their, their hands, they're doing stuff.
And at the same time, we're not taking away from private business, we're, we're not taking opportunities away. I'm, I'm sure there's not a painting company in Rockdale that would be excited about giving us a low-ball number to go paint the swings at the park. But if they are, we're powered to them, but I don't think that's the case. But we have to be careful that we're not taking business away from businesses that, as well. So that's.
Any other thoughts, comments regarding this workshop? I think it's been some good discussion.
Thank you all very much for that and I will probably want to sit down with a couple of you to flesh out some of those ideas regarding the volunteer coordinator and we'll, we'll continue this discussion outside of the meeting.
Great. Thank you. Item nine A, consider take necessary action on the first reading of an ordinance amending the parking on unimproved surfaces, uh, surface ordinance. Doug, welcome back.
Hi. I'm gonna give you a little background. Some of y'all run around. About three years ago, there was a project came to town called a highway improvement and a sidewalk project. We lost quite a few parking spaces and so planning and zoning took on some workshops to develop more parking and there was a business came to town that was looking for parking and the result of that is we started looking at alternative forms of parking. And so we discovered that there was the thing called grass pavers or GeoGrid that it would hold the material in place and be a pervious parking. And so we said, let's look at both business and residential. And we looked at residential and there always has been on the books that residential parking should have a surface of either concrete or asphalt. We said, let us therefore upgrade this to include grass pavers. We were heroes. We came before city council. City council was having issues with residents talking about on, on-street parking and, and a few other issues and they told me to take it back and make it more inclusive and enforceable. So we took it back, we worked shop, we brought it back as the amendment. City council passed that, but took a one-year moratorium on enforcement. At the end of that moratorium, Ben did a survey and found that fully one-third of the city was not compliant with the residential parking. That's where we stand today. So you kicked it back to us again. We did one regular session and two workshops, including an evening workshop that some of y'all attended. We learned that the citizens in Rockdale really, really want improved streets and a lot of other things that we learned, but we had no resolutions or, for making improvements to the parking on improved surfaces. Ben went to work for us real hard, put in lots of hours and came up with the amendment that you have presented to you now. Your options at this point, if it fails to get a motion or a second, it may, remains on the books as written. You can pass it with this amendment. You can pass it with changes to this amendment. Here's Ben to tell you about the amendment.
Is there another option to table for a 12-month period of time?
It can be rescinded as well as another, as another option.
The ordinance can be rescinded.
Yes, the original ordinance that was passed a year ago could be rescinded.
Would that include also the existing one that was already on the books before a year ago?
With amendment? I don't know what that one looked like.
If we rescinded, it takes everything away, doesn't it?
Yes, because.
I think they're all parking.
Can they table?
Go ahead, Ben.
So we, Mike Commissioner said, we, we have been hard at work and a lot of thanks to BBW for help with me on the ordinance because it's, it's taken a lot of hours and I'm gonna go through what we're proposing with citizen input, which was greatly appreciated, commissioners input, council input. This is the best solution we can think of if you don't want to rescind the ordinance to accommodate both parties. This is your discretion at the end, just keep that in mind, but I'm gonna go through what we're proposing. I'll answer any questions that you have after that. So there was already an existing ordinance for those who do not know and what our amendment did was simply add that you cannot park on unimproved surfaces and residential properties no longer. We've since gotten feedback on how to amend that. And so what we proposed is we've taken some things that already existed out. One of those items is there was a stipulation that you cannot park on the street for no more than four hours at a time. That was already existing. We're proposing to remove that from this ordinance amendment. There was a stipulation in there that was already existing before the amendment that you could have your vehicles towed. We're proposing to remove that. And then what we've done on this amendment is we've done two things to try to help our citizens out. The first is provide more materials that they can park on and I, I'll get with that on the ordinance of how we define that. And then the other is to define a legal non-conforming property. And so if you flip your page and you get to section C, you'll see a long list of what we've attempted to do. And so if you look at section two, we define what those materials that we will allow are, which consist of crushed rock, gravel, other materials laid over subsoil, which provides a hardened surface, resists rutting, provides sufficient water runoff and is created and drained of all water. Then we go to the next section where this is where we begin to try to define what that legal nonconformance is for existing properties that may not have a drive. So I'll read it for verbatim and then we can discuss after, if you do not mind. So on section three, we say it's an affirmative defense to prosecution for the parking of vehicles at an existing residence on an unimproved drive or unimproved parking area where such unimproved drive or unimproved parking area existed before the effective date of the ordinance from which this section is derived. However, the existing unimproved drive or unimproved parking area shall be maintained in a fashion that would support vehicle traffic, not allow grass or weeds or other vegetation to grow in the unimproved drive or unimproved parking area. We then go to section four where we define even further that it's an affirmative defense for the parking of vehicles at an existing residence on an unimproved drive or unimproved parking area where such unimproved drive or unimproved parking area at the residence was issued a certificate of occupancy prior to the passing of this ordinance. We then define even more in section five, that after the effective date of this ordinance, you shall be considered legal non-conforming unless the improved parking surface is designed to conform with current driveway standards and meets the current all-weather surface definition found in chapter 14. If the parking service is improved both in design and the standards set out in chapter 14, then it shall be considered in full conformance. And then the last section does not include.
Where are you?
So on, I just read section five.
In the ordinance itself on the second page.
In the ordinance. So if you're on C and you go to V, which is five in Roman numerals.
Yeah.
That's where I'm at on how we're defining if you bring your property to full compliance or you're legal non-conforming, if you improve it with the other materials that we list in this section specifically. And then the last section essentially states that junk vehicles do not count towards your vehicle count of your legal non-conforming use, so it had to be a currently registered vehicle that's operable. And so with that, I'm open to questions on each section or advice.
Is there a way that this could be, does it, if this is done, does it have to be done citywide? Could we have something that was for an historical district or a downtown district or something like that, but not for the entire community?
So this is for residential areas only? This, this does not address commercial, downtown, those types of areas?
There are residences, residents who live downtown as well.
It is for area zoned residential, is that correct?
Right, no. So this is, the way the ordinance is written is for zoning, so that's how you'd have to handle it if you wanted to only do, you'd have to do a zoning classification, you couldn't section it off by property by property, if that's, if that's the question.
So one of the things that this does, and I appreciate Ben's work on this, is it actually allows those vehicles that are existing today to stay. And if they do make improvements for a new driveway, it, it allows, they, they would lose that legal nonconformance then because those vehicles would be parked in a legally established driveway. Part of the problem that we ran into them and Doug mentioned the fact that a third of the residents are in violation, well, two-thirds of those that are in violation had no driveway whatsoever, so they had no option. So this basically prevents the problem from getting any worse. I think it allows for an improvement over time to the, to the situation, it's just gonna take. It's just gonna take a long time to get to the point where we all want to be. And I will, I also have said this before, that this ordinance that was adopted a year ago is not uncommon at all. In most cities, it is illegal to park vehicles in your front yard or side yard.
So, I read that, in part, in the, in the recommendation that, and I agree with it. It's, it stops the problem from getting any worse. But I don't see anything here that encourages anybody to make it any better, unless they just arbitrarily decide, hey, I'm gonna change what I've been doing. It keeps it from happening again, but it doesn't start fixing the problem that exists, in my opinion. Is that?
That's what the.
And that's, that's, that's where, you know, the stuff hit the fan.
Well, and that's what the legal nonconformance does. You know, I explain it to the plan commission in this way. You're not gonna see something overnight of this change. But the way legal nonconformance works is you have a use, that you have to continue to use that. You lose that use if you stop it for more than six months. And so, any new developments, like the one you'll hear about later, this will be on the board that they cannot park on their grass. And so, as new developments come in, you have an ordinance in place that prevents it for existing residences that are legal nonconforming. They'll naturally, over time, comply, whether it's, they lose a car at some point, because they, a family member goes off to college, and now they're down to two cars. They've stopped the three-car use for six months, and so now they're down to two, and you'll slowly start seeing it come down. What this ordinance does is it doesn't fix your problem to where nobody can park on the grass, but it prevents it from growing. And so, it was the best way that we could figure out how to help two-thirds of the citizens that don't have a driveway at all.
An earlier version of this ordinance, I think prior to the last plan commission that we had, did not have that legal nonconformance aspect in it. And what I was suggesting at that point is when we make some of these other adjustments, that we begin enforcement, but initially, we would consistently, inconsistently enforce the ordinance, if that makes any sense. We would go after the worst offenders initially and deal with them and get them into a position that they were more conforming to everybody else. And then, take another step a little bit further, and then another step a little bit further. And so, you know, the goal would be to potentially, within about three years, have full compliance. And, you know, maybe down, in next, in next year's budget, put some money in there, some grant money in there to help qualified homeowners that are low income to be able to construct driveways that meet some type of eligibility. But we would give them time. In other words, we had a year to try to curb this. And, and I don't think it was taken seriously, and there was not the response that we were hoping for in that 12-month period. So, I think if we're gonna enforce it, we need to start right away. Grandfathering is another option that might be more palatable, but it is gonna be slower in its impact on the community.
Well, my, I had thrown out an idea or two about, I guess my problem comes into rental properties that are owned and operated by somebody that doesn't live in Rockdale, Texas. It's out of sight, out of mind for them. That's the ones that I want to encourage. Get your stuff together and fix these properties, because we're the ones that have to look at it. We're the ones that have to deal with it while they're off somewhere else. And I guarantee, if I go to their house, they're not parked in their yard.
Right.
That's the ones that I wanna figure out. How do we address those?
I agree with what Lynn said.
I mean, the question would be, is whether we could enforce the ordinance on rental properties before we address it on owner-occupied?
And, and, and the other part of my, my owner-occupied part was that, that it's grandfathered in until it changes ownership. Or until that water meter comes from one person's name to another, there's some triggers in there that make people bring it up into compliance at some point. That's the only way that we're gonna get the problem fixed. I agree with, everything you've got here stops it from getting worse, but I don't see it fixing what we've already got.
Well, the fix will.
I didn't make any friends when I said it the first time. I didn't make any friends when I said it this time.
Right.
The fix will be a slow trickle-down fix over an extended period of time, potentially, without allowing, once one removes, to replace that. Correct, Ben? Isn't that what you said?
Right. The, the way nonconforming uses work is you have to use it continuously. If you stop using something for six months, I'll give the example. If you have a car, and like I said, you have a kid that goes to college, and you had three, and you now have two, and the kid never comes back. Over a six-month period, you're now down to two. And so, they'd have to be surveys done every six months to see what's the continual use of your property's vehicles. It would take a lot of work, but that's how you would make sure of what people's uses are.
So, I, I just recently bought a building in Dallas, and my building is in conformance as long as it stays in use. It completely changed owners, so I don't have to bring that building up to par, which I really should. But the city of Dallas is telling me no, because you, it's the same continuous use of the building, even though it's by a different owner. And so, these are always, this is a house, it's always gonna be a house. So, why, unless it sits vacant for six months, there's no trigger.
Yeah, and.
Can you, can you make the legal nonconform, Barbara? Can you make the legal nonconformance conditional of ownership? And so, if it changes, can that change, can you write it so that that would change?
Does, does what I'm trying to accomplish make sense? That, that there's something that triggers it to have to happen eventually? I don't, it doesn't have to happen tomorrow, it doesn't have to happen five years from now. But there's something that's gotta trigger it to happen eventually.
I'd like Ben to be able to assure me, because Ben, I think everybody here thinks you do a great job. But when I hear this, it sounds administratively like a really hot mess to be able to enforce. And, and I'm assuming this, this task now falls on you, as if you don't have enough to do already.
You're building job security, aren't you, Ben? We know what you're up to.
I would do it in a different way if I was doing that. It would be hard to enforce, if that's the question. It's enforceable, but it would be constant documentation with pictures with timestamps. The same way that code enforcement works in today's date, I'll give the example of a trash case, you know? When I send somebody a trash letter, you have to take a picture with the date and timestamp. They have a certain amount of time to comply. Then, you have to continually take pictures as you get that through the court system to make, to let the judge know that they're not complying. It'd be a similar, just on a tremendously larger scale.
Now, you're gonna have to do a third of the population.
Well, it would, yeah. Everybody in violation, yeah. It would have to be.
So, with that statement in mind, and I know we can have more discussion, I would put out a motion to extend the moratorium for another 12 months.
I kind of feel the same way. I just don't think it's a good time in our economy to put this financial burden on people. I do agree that it needs to be done for our ordinance to align like similar cities. I mean, we have to come up to par. It's just not a good time. And already, given our demographics, we're in poverty, like that's sadly. All those people are gonna be eligible.
We'll have discussion, we have a motion on the floor right now. So, we'll, we'll have, that's okay. We'll have discussion, you'll have a time for discussion after the motion, if the motion receives a second. We have a motion on the floor from council member Milton, thank you, to extend the parking ordinance moratorium for 12 more months. Is there a second to that motion?
I second that.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Now, discussion. Council member Olivares, did you finish your discussion?
I think I did. I was just saying that I recognize that there's an issue. I just believe in current economy. To put that financial burden on these households that are already impoverished is just harsh. And I don't really see this really making people do anything. So, it's like, why do it? I mean, you're saying it doesn't get worse, right? Okay.
If, if we do it for 12 months, so, so the way I read this ordinance, or understand it right now, we're not putting any more burden on anybody as this reads. What I'm wanting to do is put more burden on them somehow, some way, eventually. I understand that. But if we don't do this now, anything that happens within the next 12 months, they can park in the grass.
But, but if we do something, Lynn, I.
I can build a house tomorrow and start parking in the grass.
I, I understand it. But if we do something that Mr. Ben tells me is really gonna be hard to enforce, I'm just not sure how, why.
I don't think, this is, do you consider this piece of it hard to enforce? Or what I'm describing that we're trying to get to is gonna be the part that's hard, hard to enforce?
So, the, okay. Speaking on a professional, on, on reviewing this ordinance, I had a staff member, Justin Williams, he put a lot on time this as well, so if you see him, thank him. He reviewed all cities in Texas. Asked him to take all cities in Texas, review if they have this ordinance. If they do, do they grandfather current properties or not? Unfortunately, it fell at 50%. 50% of cities do, 50% of cities don't. Now, the typical way that they will do it is when they grandfather a property, if they choose to, it's by certificate of occupancy. And so, they're flat out, do not have to apply this ordinance until they get a new certificate of occupancy. All new builds have to not park on the grass. And so, as Lynn was speaking to earlier, the way certificate of occupancy changes work is if you have to bring your home up to code by choice, you have to get a new certificate occupancy. Or if the use ceases for six months, and you have code violations that you have to bring the property up to choice, you have to get a certificate occupancy, but it's not off of ownership change. Though somebody changed, you know, sold their house to their neighbor, their neighbor got it, they're not required to get a new certificate occupancy. The other cities said that everybody has to stop parking on grass as this passes. And so, the reason I say that this is hard to enforce, but is enforceable, is because the way we have defined it is we're establishing that nonconforming use, but we're not allowing to expand. Other cities say you're exempt, and you can do whatever you want on your property until you have to get a new certificate occupancy. We're saying you're exempt, but you can't expand your use subject to what you're already using it to upon passage of this. That's, is that, is that cleared up a little bit of why I'm saying it's a little bit harder to enforce? It's enforceable, you're just keeping a continuous timeline of how someone's using their property.
We'll have to go drive every street in the city, videotape every, every house that's in compliance, out of compliance to know how many vehicles that they have that are not in compliance. And so.
Not the way this is.
The way this is writ, the way this is written.
Legal nonconformity.
The way this is written, it defines legal nonconformance. It defines allowing somebody to put in a coverage that we wouldn't allow elsewhere, specifically for residential parking, that they would still be legal nonconforming.
So, if we, if we, if we put the brakes on this for 12 months, have we stopped the problem? We haven't stopped the problem yet. We're still, that's the, that's the part I'm concerned with, Dave, is.
I, I would just, I, I hear you. But I also think that it's not just 12 months, it's 12 months of educating, because I just don't feel like there's often enough where people understand what we're trying to do. And so, whether it's town hall meetings, it's letter, you know, articles in the newspaper, social media, whatever, I just feel like there's too much of our population, myself included, that does not, is not sure that I fully 100% grasp all of this. And I'm, in addition to be an administrative thing, I think that it could be a public relations ugliness. But that doesn't need to, that doesn't need to drive the vote.
Yes, Doug, I'm aware of that. Thank you. We were still having discussion. Counsel, is there any other, any other discussion? Being no discussion, we have a motion on the floor. We'll vote all in favor of said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign?
Of three.
I don't know what that does. I, I, what, what does that do? It doesn't carry, so it's now what happens to it?
You can continue to make another motion, you can table it, you can continue your, the motion died, is what happened.
It didn't, it didn't die.
It didn't die. It had a second, so it didn't die. The motion didn't pass.
There was one other issue that the mayor pointed out to me before, before the meeting that I wanted to bring to y'all, all's attention. It wasn't something that we had discussed. I'm sorry. On page. Hmm, I'm sorry.
It was vehicles connected to a trailer.
I need to get to the right ordinance.
Yes.
Under, under, on the first page, under A, 12.04018A, parking of trailers connected to vehicles. It says, "It shall be unlawful for any person, firm, association of persons, or corporations to park or leave standing any trailer unless it is connected to a motor vehicle." This was, this included trailers potentially parked in the driveway, in, in a driveway, next to a house, on the side yard, in the front yard, anywhere. I think that they are already prohibited somewhere else from being parked in the street.
After 5:00 PM.
But he wanted to have conversation regarding how this, and if you do, we can amend it between the first and second reading if we get to that point. This particular section here. I, I suggested to him, if, if you all want to allow them to be parked in the driveway or on the side yard, you could just exempt that, and you, add, add, unless it is parked in a legally established driveway or on, in a side yard.
I've got a, okay. I got a question on C, Roman numeral two. It says, "Improved surfaces for this section shall include a surface of betuminous asphalt, cement, concrete, or other materials other than grass, such as crushed rock, gravel, or other materials." If I wanna do, get around this, there's my out right there all day long. How, how do we, what is other materials? That's.
So, if you.
How do we enforce that?
If you continue reading that, as the sentence continues, it gives you what your criteria would be?
Laid over subsoil, which provides a hardened surface, resists rutting, provides for sufficient water runoff, and is graded and drained of all surface water.
So, it intentionally leaves it open? You know, we didn't wanna specifically list what you can and can't do as materials are gonna change. You may have a better idea, that may suit your property better than what we list out. So, we've given you your criteria. This is directly from, maybe Houston, that I found their ordinance from. That was a pretty good definition, that was inclusive. That's the goal of it, to be as inclusive as we can.
I'm, I'm gonna ask a question, because I don't understand, and this is why I vote, did not vote for. If we don't do anything tonight, is there anything that keeps this problem from getting bigger for the next 12 months? If we adopt this, if we were to say to adopt this and choose not to enforce it on existing properties, does that stop the problem from getting worse? It stops the problem from happening on new builds?
I would say yes.
That's what I'm interested in. Stop the bleeding somehow, some way, tonight from getting worse. If we don't wanna enforce it on existing, that's fine. We can do that at a later date. But we gotta stop it from continuing to get worse. Is, is, is the only reason I did not vote in favor of that, Dave.
I was the same way.
Do you want to put that in a form of a motion?
I'm asking the question, if, if we had that in a motion to, to adopt it, but not enforce on existing, if the motion was to say, we adopt this as presented, but don't enforce on existing property owners for up to 12 months, does that stop the bleeding from getting worse and gives us 12 months to?
Well, it wouldn't, I don't think, because of the fact that, just like, we adopted a pretty strict ordinance a year ago.
Oh, yeah, we did.
And the, and I've been told, I wasn't here a year ago, but I've been told that the problem has gotten worse. But even though we adopted it and then put a moratorium on it, the problem got worse. So, if we adopted this ordinance tonight, or next month, on the, after the second reading, and put a one-year moratorium on enforcement, the same thing could happen. Now, I would say that the legal nonconformance aspect of this would protect those property owners from.
Existing property owners.
I'm sorry, from, from all the existing property owners, from any, from any hardship. It's not existing property owners. It's not, existing property owners that have vehicles legally parked in the grass is not gonna have, it's not gonna have any hardship on them with the ordinance that's being proposed.
And it cannot have any effect on them for twenty-four months.
I'm sorry?
And the way that it's written, it cannot have effect on them for twenty-four months if they do the same thing.
Yes, so, I mean, it will, like Ben said, those that come in for a certificate of occupancy because of the fact that they renovate more than fifty percent of their home, would le, lose that legal non-conformance. If, if they in fact do put a driveway in of, of betuminous, whatever, that meets the definition, they would lose that legal non-conformance, and we want them to do that. Um, so, like I say, over time, or if they, if they reduce the number, the hardest thing to enforce would be if they reduce the number of vehicles, that's gonna be what's a little bit harder to enforce. But we will be able to keep it from getting worse. In other words, we'll videotape, we'll, we'll, we'll record everybody the existing conditions, and they won't be, if they have seven cars out there today, they're not gonna be able to put eight or nine. Because we'll know the existing conditions after it's addressed.
I still believe that's gonna be a nightmare to enforce and to monitor.
Well.
Well, you just, we're taking probably a busy young man here in cutting fifty percent of his available time just to work on enforcement of this ordinance, in my opinion. Counsel, any other discussion or motions?
When, when we say that the situation got worse, from, how did, how was that measured?
It wasn't, there's no measurement to.
So it's just anecdotes?
That's right. Because this, there was no analysis done until this analysis that's on your screen was performed. So I couldn't tell you if it got worse or better until we did another analysis, you know?
I would hope we could just find some more money by next year, maybe put it into our budget, I don't know.
I'd ask Roxanne if I were you.
Because the lots are smaller, so they just don't have room for, for driveways, so.
My house has a one, a one-car driveway. There is no other place to park, except on the side. My husband's truck has been there for forty years.
I mean, I'm guilty too. I have my husband's work truck in the grass, so I'm guilty too.
Okay. We need to come to resolution on this item.
Could I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Gravel's not that expensive. Is that a problem that y'all see? I mean, to, to put gravel down?
That's a good question. Based on some feedback that we received from residents, that, that would put them in a financial constraint if they had to put down gravel. So that was the feedback we received during the public hearing. One of the public hearing that Doug referenced. Wasn't that correct, Doug?
I tuned out a long time ago, fellas. What, what was the question?
Disregard.
No, that was, there was a broad spectrum.
Okay. Lynn, you.
Lynn, Lynn, you got a motion?
I know you got it in you, I know you got it in you.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I make a motion that we accept, what is it, nine A?
Nine A.
Nine A, parking ordinance as it's presented with a twelve-month, uh, timeframe of non-enforcement on existing properties. And I hope it does what I'm trying to do, I don't know.
I think it will.
First reading, by the way.
First reading.
This is just the first reading. So we have a motion on the floor. Counselmember Perry, do we have a second? Have a second. A motion and a second on the floor to, uh, pass the first reading of item nine A as presented with a twelve-month non-enforcement moratorium on existing homeowners in Rockdale, in the city limits of Rockdale. Is there any discussion?
The only thing that I might like to see changed is what you were talking about with the trailers that are parked. I mean, if these people that we see have travel trailers parked in their side yard, they're not gonna leave a vehicle hooked up to that.
It's not gonna be enforced for twelve months.
And this could be, that section can be amended for the second reading if you in fact wanna make that change.
So we can make some comments and then come back on the second reading, say this was changed.
And lastly, I do like what Lynn was alluding to about homeowners versus renters. I do feel like they treat properties differently. I don't know if we could add that.
I think that's gonna be a, an ongoing, this is, this is first, this is an evolution, it's gonna be something evolving as we go, I hope.
I would encourage counsel to keep those thoughts to present during the second reading. We have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any further discussion? Being none, we'll vote all in favor of said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item nine B. Yeah. Consider take any necessary action on the first reading of an ordinance amending the open and outdoor storage regulations. Ben?
So some backstory on this amendment. We, we had an ordinance still on the book that does not allow for open or outdoor storage. And as you know, there's a lot of businesses in town that use open and outdoor storage, and staffs never received a complaint on it. So what the attempt of this ordinance is, is we wanna acknowledge that use so they can continue that use, but put parameters on that use for future businesses that may come in opened up. So if you flip to the ordinance on the first page, under section two, we provide two definitions. The first one, we define what open or outdoor storage is. And then the second, we define what outside display merchandise is. And so the attempt of those definitions is to allow for the existing use. We've added a parameter in there for if you do not meet any of that criteria in those definitions that you can apply for a temporary outside sales permit to sell whatever you may want to sell for a short period of time. There is a fee with that, which is a hundred dollars. Schools, uh, churches and government entities are exempt from that fee, but they would still apply for permit. So that's the attempt of this ordinance, is just to acknowledge an existing use, allow it, but put parameters on it.
Where did the seven days or seven times come from, uh, annually?
That's the typical, the attorney behind me had a community that recently adopted something like this, and that was what they came with. And, you know, we do a similar thing with garage sales, but we only allow it three times a year, I believe, if I'm remembering right, so this actually doubles that, what we allow.
Counsel, any other questions? We'll wait for Councilmember Melton to. Counsel, Member Melton, do you have any questions regarding this? I'll entertain a motion to, uh, in regards to the first reading of this ordinance.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept the recommendation from council, or to council for item eight, uh, sorry, nine B, uh, for outdoor storage.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Being no discussion, we'll vote all in favor of said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item nine C, consider take any necessary action on the second reading of an ordinance amending the mobile food vendor ordinance to allow for drive-throughs. Ben?
So the last time that the, uh. It does a typo.
That's a typo.
It's second.
It's second, right?
It is second. So last time the council approved the first reading, but you wanted to send it back to planning commission to make a couple amendments. In those amendments, you did not wanna see gravel as an allowed use. And then you also wanted us to specify a little bit further on what other items could be used to differentiate the mobile food unit and the vehicle that would be approaching in the drive lane. And so we have done that, we've taken out the gravel, we've given some other ideas such as fencing, concrete blocks, or other suitable measures. So we intentionally leave that open, so if somebody provides us a, a really nice site plan that would work, we could approve it instead of having to come to council for approval. I will also add a note, there was a question that arose last meeting, I misspoke. The building code does not define mobile food units, but the Texas Health and Human Services does. So I've included that in your packet in case you wanted to know how that was defined.
Counsel, any questions? Ben?
Planning and zoning, everybody's good with the way it's done?
Everybody was approved. I hope counsel received some pictures from a resident that brought this to our attention of some successful drive-throughs. I have one here, that was one of the pictures that were included of some examples, so this is not a new idea.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance nine C as read.
I have a motion, uh, to approve the second reading of item nine C as written, is there a second? Motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Being none, we'll vote all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item nine D, Tim, did you want to discuss tabling this?
Yeah, I would, I would request counsel to go ahead and table the second reading of this. We have, the police department has received the mobile handheld, um.
Dosimeter.
Decimal meters, uh, but there's some, they're, they're still testing them. We wanna make sure that the numbers that we have in here are measurable and, and good. So I would ask that you table it until next meeting.
I'll make a motion, we table nine D till, uh, November meeting.
I'll second.
A motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Being none, we'll vote all in favor of said motion, signify by right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item ninety, consider take any necessary action on the first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning by rezoning properly located. It, I won't read the property IDs, you can read them, along Texas Street to change zoning classification from A agricultural to P. R one, single-family residential. Ben?
Plan unit development.
Sir?
P U D.
So I, I have provided in the ordinance that you'll see, um, there's a, it should be at the end of the ordinance, that's in your packet. It should say PUD Republic Ridge subdivision at the top of the page. These are the items that do not reflect current zoning code that their PUD asked for in this approval, that you would treat their property with those parameters. I will say everything that's not mentioned automatically reverts back to the single-family zoning code. So, for example, landscaping requirements, they'll meet single-family landscaping requirements, which is two trees and front yard grass. I have Philip here behind me that should have a presentation for you guys with his partner, Dan, that they can give that to you on what this would look like if this zoning piece is approved. You'll see in the upcoming action items that this zoning piece sets up what their preliminary plat would look like. So this must be approved if the plat would be approved. And I'll get into that when we get with the plat, but I'll hand it over to Philip.
So the plat takes place in ten A and ten B?
Yeah, so the plat is a one-reading item, zoning's a two-reading. The plat essentially won't be officially approved until this goes through twice.
Good evening again. I'm Philip Vargas, I don't think I said that earlier. Uh, so here, here's a, here's our site, overall site plan of the entire development. Uh, it's two hundred and thirty-four, uh, total lots, uh, thirty-foot being the minimum lot size. As we've talked about earlier, it's largely along Texas Avenue with a small portion on Belton. And then there's a portion of Lee, uh, Street that's currently not, um, constructed, uh, but it's kind of a hard pan, you know, but we'll pave it as part of the development. Uh, with this, uh, there is a, an open space here that'll be a park. Uh, this triangle is gonna be detention. Uh, this leftover is something I haven't quite decided what we're gonna do with, but, you know, there's an opportunity for some lots. Um, and the last time I was here at P and Z, the pastor of the church was here, and we talked about potentially partnering to do something together there. Uh, but I'm gonna kinda let, you know, kinda let that relationship kinda grow as it needs to on the side. This green space in the middle is our detention for that area, uh, because everything kinda in that area naturally drains to the southeast. There are some off-site sewer improvements, I don't know what they are just yet. Uh, there's an analysis that is part of our scope that we're paying for that is gonna give us some clarity to what that is. Uh, that's another item, you know, that we're kinda throwing in as part of our, as part of our, uh, pitch for the project. As mentioned earlier, there's a traffic study that was done with the conclusion that there's, they just recommend that we increase the quality of the roads. There's no expansion that's required. The name of the subdivision is Republic Ridge, so there's kind of a little Texas theme to it. The streets have, you know, Texas, um, you know, kinda ranch-style, uh, job names. Uh, my wife came up with that. Uh, she likes the name Streets, it's a, it's an interesting hobby, but she likes to do it. Uh, fortunately, I can do work that allows her to do that. So we'll have this done in two phases, the phase line will be about right there, where the detention will be in phase one, and then, you know, we'll build the, the southern half out and then come back and build the northern half later. The builder that's gonna go in here is Lennar, uh, who's the second biggest home builder in the country. Um, so they obviously bring a lot of experience. Um, and Dan Bruley is here with Lennar, uh, for any questions y'all might have for them.
One of the things that he did mention that's important is that they're actually planning on concrete streets?
That's right.
Built tar specifications.
Yes, concrete streets within the development, yes.
Is there a website that we could go to to see the kind of homes that you're intending for this subdivision?
Glad, glad you asked.
And also, what is the price point on these homes?
My name is Dan, pardon me, Dan Bruley up with Lennar Homes, which is the largest home builder in the United States. We have the, your question was?
The price point.
Price point.
The price point on these homes?
Price point, we're looking at the possibility of getting the price point, given economic conditions in U S today. And, and workforce housing is our key issue. To, to give you some information about the greatest amount of employment sector that would feed this city is gonna come from Samsung. Uh, the, the onsite employees at Samsung will bring in income of anywhere from seventy-nine to a hundred and nineteen thousand dollar income. The secondary workforce behind Samsung is all the suppliers. Trucking suppliers, subcontractors, and contractors for them. That income, which is approximately twenty-eight hundred homes, or twenty-eight hundred employees, would dictate between the two employment sectors of a, a home, average home sales price, or beginning home sales price in the low two hundreds, and ranging all the way up to the low three hundreds. So we intend on having two different product lines on this. As you'll see, as we go through the slides, you'll be able to see the, some of the elevations. Two of these units are being, both product lines are being built right now in Northern Gerald, the city of Gerald. Uh, they have been very well-received. Uh, our sales and marketing areas on those are exceeding twenty home sales a month because of the price range that we can hit with this product line. I've known Philip for a long time. I trust the, the man to give us the product, the, the, the lot finish design that we need for this product line. Does that answer your question?
It does, um, you know, not to compare, but to compare, I guess, to our current developer. You know, they did put in a lot of green space and a park and things like that, and a hike and bike show, and I just don't see really any of that. Am I missing something? Do y'all have a park, or?
Right, so that triangle, that's gonna be the park.
Oh, that's gonna be a park?
That will be a park with a little trail system around it. And that park would probably be something for small children.
Great, great.
Swing set, slides, so on so forth. They're gonna vary anywhere from about eleven, uh, ten fifty up to almost twenty-nine hundred square feet. So they, they can get small and all the way large. Two, two-bedroom, two-bath, all the way up to four-bedroom, uh, two-and-a-half bath.
That's a multi-story house at that.
That is, yes, all the way to the multi-story, yeah. Some of these, uh, product lines are real deep. Seventy-five to eighty-foot deep. The depth of the pad site. The depth of the pad site.
How deep are the lots?
The, the lots are, uh, at, at a minimum of one hundred and twenty-foot deep. So it would give us approximately a twenty-to-thirty-foot rear yard line.
So what is, on this, um, you're at, some of the ask that you made reference to, Ben, uh, a set, front setback of twenty-foot versus twenty-five? Side setback of, Doug, you had to turn my lights back on.
Yeah.
I, I think it says five feet versus eight, nine? It's nine. Both sides?
That's right.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any, um, instances where, wha, um, why do you need a, a front setback? Why are we shrinking the front setback and the rear setback? What's the?
It really is an issue that answers our building depth. When you have a, a twenty-five-foot, pardon me, a twenty-five-foot front setback and a seventy-five-foot to eighty-foot depth of pad, it gives you a pretty small backyard. So, and, go ahead, sir.
So, and what is it now? What's our back? Is it twenty-five as well?
Our back is fifteen.
It's, so they're not asking for variance on that one? Okay.
Rear yard is fifteen?
Our rear setback requirements are fifteen feet traditionally, so is our street-side setback, so they're actually matching that requirement.
Yes, sir.
And so was what, what was the second one?
The street side on a corner lot is a fifteen-foot setback.
Gotcha. Is the, uh, all underground utilities in this?
Yes, sir.
In the front or is it common in the back? Uh, all utilities are in the front of the properties?
All, all in the front.
In, in regards to our previous conversation about parking, what, what is parking like with these lots? Is it, is it house and driveway only or is there an attached garage or?
Uh, there, all of the, all of the units we're proposing have got garages. Some one-car, some two-car garage units, and you would have a driveway with one car on it as well. Whenever we have on the smaller of the units, we'll try and put the driveways adjacent each other and then feather them in as tight as we possibly can, giving as much street frontage for an additional car on the street, should that be required.
And will you have an HOA that manages?
Yes, sir.
Things like parking in the grass or parking in the street or?
Yes, okay. We, I, we require, uh, our developers to provide a product line to us. We add on top of that the HOA requirements, which speak to maintenance, management, so on so forth. They would handle, HOA would handle all of the open space, all the drainage ditches, and all the park site.
Thank you.
What are your street widths?
Uh, it's, that's not a variance either. That's a standard city, uh, section.
And they're concrete. Is that correct?
Within the development, yes.
Which is a big plus for us as well as the city.
With curb and gutter or just paved street?
Counsel, any other questions?
Thirty-seven?
Did I understand that there are pictures coming in this presentation?
Yeah, Ben, do you have?
Ben, are there any other photographs?
They had some with us.
Oh, there you go.
Click this right here.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. The attorney's getting by. This is a, a rendering of, uh, some of the product lines that we would be providing. This is the smallest width. These are the ones with the greatest depth as well.
Any brick or stone?
Uh, right, uh, see, I goofed it up already. Ben? There we go. We have not proposed any masonry at all on the exterior. The siding we're using is a cementitious board on all the exterior siding.
Hardy plank?
It is a Hardy plank product, yes, sir. Okay, Ben?
Oh, you were talking about the finishes and how the appliances come with it?
Yes, one of the things that, uh, that we do as a standard feature, uh, is something they call, everything is included. That means refrigerator, the washer, the dryer, the refrigerator, the, the, uh, uh, gosh, what else would it be? Microwave. That's all included in the price of the home.
And Dan will mop at one time?
Once. But this is typical, I have, and I can give you pictures as well. I did not send them up to Ben, but I can give you pictures of existing subdivisions with the same product lines on them and, and lot width. This is the second product that we would propose. This is the two-car garage. These get a little bit higher in square footage.
Single-story?
Uh, single and two-story plans. And the square footage is up on the, there was one that's fourteen-hundred, eighty square feet. I can't read that one.
Sixteen-hundred and sixteen?
Sixteen-eight-seven.
Yeah, sixteen-eight-seven.
That one can be tough to read.
Okay, I'll just back down to a single story.
Eighteen-sixteen.
And some of those are on forty-foot lots, correct?
That is correct. This product line would be on a forty-foot wide product.
Do you guys ever include like a neighborhood clubhouse or anything, anything like that?
Typically, when we get up over five hundred units in a single subdivision, we'll put in pools, clubhouses and things like that. We do not exceed that, so the open spaces are what's going to be the amenity, if you will, along with the, the, the park site for the kids. And all of these will be concrete streets, curb gutter, and sidewalks on both sides.
How, how many units did you, or how many lots did you say were going in this?
Two thirty-four.
Two thirty-four. What about public utilities? Do we have water and sewer readily available there or?
Water is readily available. Sewer, we're doing a study right now. KPA Engineering, uh, has given us, uh, preliminary, uh, report. I was hoping to get the cost, uh, estimate the cost to do it, but.
The sewer's close by, it's just whether or not it has capacity.
Capacity is the only issue.
Capacity issues, what we're looking at.
What about firewater? Is there enough?
Sorry? Firewater.
Fire protection water?
Right, it's a Texas plant and it's on a high-pressure plant we got with it.
What about, like, other utilities, natural gas?
Um, yet to be determined. Uh, we build both a, a full electric or gas, uh, natural gas product. Uh, still yet to be determined during the studies.
Streetlights? Streetlights.
Streetlight, yes, sir.
And what about, uh, from, uh, the word go, when does, when, is there any timeframe on, on construction, when this?
Well, that's when I get my whip out and start hitting him. Soon as we get approval, we want to be able to get going as quickly as we possibly can.
The plan would be if, if the first reading is approved, oh, yeah, we're in the plat. If the first reading is approved tonight, the plat, the plats are approved tonight. Um, at the November meeting, we'd have the second reading and the development agreement negotiated and ready to go, and I'm not sure what other.
I think that was it.
So.
Our intention is to start as quickly as possible.
And so the only way you come out of here is on Texas to Belton. Is that right?
That's right.
Is that a concern?
It is.
Belton's already super busy. I mean, I feel like it is. You're probably going to need a four-way stop there coming out off of Texas.
It's a three-way, isn't it? Texas doesn't continue on, does it?
Texas does not continue straight through to seventy-nine, unfortunately.
It's supposed to continue on Cornerstone.
Like another stop on Belton, because there's not a stop sign there where you turn to Texas.
So Texas can't continue to the north either.
Right.
Past Rising, uh, Rising.
It's my understanding Texas Street will eventually.
I tried to go down it the other day. It was a dead end.
Cornerstone is an emergency exit.
Correct, yes.
I tried to say there's a back way to.
Say that again?
The Texas Street going north will actually tie into Cornerstone as their secondary emergency exit.
Maybe once again.
In other words, if.
There was supposed to be a school in the original plating on, on Cornerstone, not these guys. And I, I was not comfortable not having a secondary roadway, and they, they said that they would improve Texas Street as an exit in case.
Once the school is erected?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So that would improve Texas Streets, what you're saying?
Well, if you give them a secondary exit, because everything right there is on those two entrances on the corner marketway.
And so conversely, that would give this neighborhood access to go out through the Cornerstone neighborhood as well.
Ben, Ben, y'all better ask him something.
Counsel, any other questions? So I, I understand we, if we approve this, then we go to the first, or the plat?
Yes.
It's the plat. And this comes back a second time?
This comes back a second time, and actually, before we can execute the plat, it has to be, this, this plat has to be heard and.
Fully has to be read a second time.
Looking at it January, February shovel again.
entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve nine, uh, E as read.
Second thought?
I have a motion to approve item nine E, the first reading as, uh, as written. Is there any discussion?
Thank you for investing in our town and bringing more homes for our citizens.
Be, no discussion, I'm sorry.
That's it. It was just a thank you.
Yes, thank you for sharing that. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item ten A?
Mayor, we have actually ten A and ten B. Barbara, can these plats be approved in one motion? There are the two different sections of, of this.
What, what Tim is asking, counsel, if we, if we could, uh, wrap these, both of these items into one motion.
Yeah, behind your purple tab, there's actually nine A and, or ten A and ten B.
Are they different properties? Is that why they're separate?
They're not contingent, so.
They're not contin, contiguous, yes.
Not contiguous?
Twenty-one houses are down in the bottom.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so they had, by plotting standards, it had to be two plots.
Mayor, if you would call them both up, if you wish to take them both up at the same time.
You say that is, okay. I can do that?
You can.
Okay.
You can do whatever you want.
Counsel, I would, yeah. Counsel, I would propose that we take under consideration both item ten A and ten B with one motion and one vote.
Now, there are some contingent, contingencies, and Mr. Blanchard will explain those.
Go ahead, Ben.
Okay, so on ten A, if you refer to the recommendation portion, there is a couple items that I've reached out to Philip to correct. I've asked for at least one of the lots to contain what their building setback lines are going to be. They need to provide a tree replacement plan, which can be notated on the plat that they'll provide them upon construction plans. They also need to put what their phase line is. He's, he's expressed what it's going to be. It just needs to reflect on the plat. And then there was a typo in the R1 PUD. They put a number four in there, so we've just asked for those corrections before approval of that plat. And then on your second plat, if you refer to your recommendation portion, again, we ask for at least one of the lots to have building setback lines. Same comment with the tree plan. We've asked them to add the location of the public utility easement that would service the lots, dedicate an easement for existing water and sewer, provide and dedicate an easement to a power line that's on the south portion of the property, and then also notate what the phasing plan is on this.
And would the city be, the, the utilities are available. Do we have any expense in getting them to the property?
This would be part, we would ask the developer to bear that expense.
That, so that'll be part of the, uh?
Development agreement.
Development agreement, okay.
So some of these comments have been addressed already. I've been working with Philip for a while on this, and this is actually the second review, and so he's, he's given me comments. But upon your approval of this, that, all of these comments would have to be addressed before approving the plat. And then the plat's also contingent on that zoning piece getting its final approval.
So, um, I will make a motion that we, uh, item ten A and ten B into one motion, uh, in recommendation, uh, taking the recommendation from the planning and zoning. Approve this with the recommendations as provided by planning and zoning and Mr. Blanchard.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Being no discussion, we'll vote all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item ten C. Consider taking any necessary action awarding contract for city audit services. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so the, this is a required action by the city. The city has to, is required by state law and our charter to do an audit. When I came in July, um, probably by the first of August, we realized that we, per the charter, we needed to change auditing firms. We were supposed to be, we were supposed to change auditing firms every three years, which Don Allman has been an, our auditor for a number of years, more than three, and has done a great job, from what I've been told. Um, but we had to change, so we went out for RFPs, did not get any response to our request to RFPs, so we went back out a second time last month, and we actually sent the RFP by email directly to, uh, probably a dozen or fifteen different providers, service providers. Um, once again, we got no response. We don't have a choice. We have to do this. Um, I talked to BBW and she recommended that I go ahead and bring this to council, to go ahead and use Mr. Allman one more time, and get him started on our audit. Next year, we will actually start the process to procure new auditing services in April. And when I talked to the, the vendors at TML, actually, they said the reason they didn't submit a proposal was they're all booked up. There are, we, we didn't solicit those soon enough. So typically, I've, in the past, I've always done that in March or April of every year, or whenever we had to go out for, for bids. So that is what I would propose, but I would recommend the council, um, to authorize the proposal from Don Allman for forty thousand dollars. Um, that includes both the, the, the single audit for, because of our grant revenues.
Counsel, any questions? Is that, uh, the forty thousand, is that what has been in the past as well or right close?
It's about five thousand dollars more than last year, last year, and it, and it's, and it's not to exceed forty thousand. Last year, I think it was not to exceed thirty-five thousand, and I think it came in around, what, thirty-two, a little bit under that.
I think it was right at thirty-five.
Was it right at thirty-five?
And, and the reason we didn't succeed is that the accounting business is going so well that these companies don't need the business.
You know, they.
One firm did respond back saying that, uh, they just didn't have enough time to get it prepared within our timeframe, because we have to have it prepared by the end of March.
Have to have it completed by the end of March?
Yeah.
So.
Any other questions, counsel? I'm going to make a motion that we take the advice of the city attorney and recommendation of the city manager to sign a letter of engagement for single audit at services with Don Allman. The motion is second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Being no discussion, we'll vote all in favor, said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item ten D, consider taking any necessary action on a request for payment by KSA Engineering for work on Tex dot utility. Gerald?
This project is a combination project for what we were doing for Cornerstone to open up additional line spacing, uh, uh, capacity for wastewater and meeting the requirements of Tex dot for the, uh, rejuvenation of four-eight-seven as it comes into, uh, Rockdale. There was a, I think, some confusion, uh, whenever the, this came up a couple of months ago and, and that it did not relate to the, uh, state revolving fund for drinking water that, uh, we've had so much trouble with KSA. That, uh, we've had so much trouble with KSA. This particular one has been a problem, but not due to KSA's, uh, lack of work or, uh, other issues or changing of personnel. So the forty thousand that you'll see on the, uh, attachment is already work that is, I mean, that's work that has already been completed. That is additional checking, uh, having surveyors out, having smoke tests done and other things that were, uh, were needed to try to find out where some lines were that we had no idea where they were at. So the seventeen thousand, uh, eight hundred, I believe it is, is, uh, sixty, is for additional work that has to be done for this to be completed, such as bidding and, uh, easements and things like that. So if we don't do the seventeen thousand, we can't complete the project with KSA. And the forty thousand is work that they actually have done that they deserve to be paid for.
And this is the, the project is the sewer line, water line relocation. Is that correct or is this?
No, the water line re- relocation is done as part of phase one of the drinking water state revolving fund. This is wastewater.
So this is the sewer line relocation along the highway.
That's correct. And upgrades for Cornerstone. I'm sorry.
Does this bill go to Cornerstone? Is this part of, is this part of?
Yes, it is.
The development costs that, that we pass back on to?
We have not yet, but that, that will still need to be done. As far as I know, there has been no pass backs, Roxanne.
This will be, will this be built back to Cornerstone?
I'm sorry, say again?
Will this be built back to Cornerstone?
We haven't built Cornerstone for any of KPA's work, for the study, for the upgrade necessary or for the work that was done.
I haven't built it back yet. I haven't been instructed to. If I am, I will.
Yeah, it, it has not been built back to them.
But it, it should be. Is that what you're saying?
A, a, a portion of it will be, yes.
Okay.
How, how, how did, how did they get their original, uh, scope of work? Because the, the original price was sixty-three thousand and now we're asking for another fifty-seven thousand, um, for extra, or they're asking for. How, where, where did the scope of work come? How did they miss the scope of work? What changed so drastically? Regardless of we're paying for it or Cornerstone's paying for it, Philip Vargas is eventually paying for it in his development. We have a due diligence to, to figure out.
Because the, because the, uh, sewer mains in that area, um, were not properly, um, shown on our, um, maps that we have. And we spent, or they, they spent and we spent, uh, weeks and weeks and weeks trying to find where these things ran. We find a manhole here and a man over here and there was nothing going between them. And we found another one down a di- a creek line over off Ackerman and.
Our GIS, our GIS information that we had online was not accurate, so they bid it based on what we had available. And they got into the field and realized that it was not accurate. There was a lot of work done to.
So anytime we go out for public utility work, we can expect a fifty percent increase from?
Not with our water, because now we have a pretty good idea where all of our water, most of our water is gonna be.
And we're making significant strides in updating the, the, uh, IMGIS system. My guys, Jo- uh, Josh and, uh, Joseph and I are constantly making upgrades to it. Whenever we find where something's wrong, we make the change.
There is a process now to update that on a regular basis.
If this receives a motion and it passes, I would ask that myself and counsel be given an update on when the cost is passed on to Cornerstone and when that is paid.
All right.
Counsel, any other questions for Tim or Gerald?
Do we know the percentage? Said that they would pay.
I, I don't, it's, it's a big convoluted mess of this piece goes there and this piece goes there and we're gonna pay one percent of this one.
Roxanne, do you know?
I've not been included in that yet. I'll get updated.
Okay.
I'll check with P three as well.
Counsel, any other questions or discussion?
That must be you. I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve ten D for the, uh, added, uh, work and compensation to KSA as provided with the understanding that, as the mayor said, when the costs are allocated back to Cornerstone, we're made aware of that. And what percentage and what dollar mill?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Being known, we'll vote. All in favor signify by right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item ten E, consider take any necessary action on reappointments to the Rockdale Housing Authority for two expired terms. Uh, I can make this very quick, painless and easy for you, counsel. Uh, the two board members that are expiring want to be, uh, put back on the board. So I'd make a motion that we, um, put the existing two board members who are having expired term back on the Rockdale Housing Authority Board.
You can't do that, but I'll take Ward's motion.
I'll second it.
I was told I could.
Oh, can you? He, he actually appoints them. You all have to.
Oh, yeah, I saw that in there.
And I can appoint there.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So we have a motion for that, boy.
Yeah. Oh, he had the.
He doesn't get very many opportunities.
Yeah, let him, let him do his thing.
I did try that one time. I got my hands slapped. Avoid you getting tongue lashing later.
So to correct my motion, I recommend counsel give me the authority to reappoint the two existing board members.
Yes, you got it.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Thank you, counsel, for entrusting me with that.
I'd say we trusted you.
Uh, Doug, item ten F, consider take any necessary action on appointments. That's, yep, that is Doug.
Yes.
Two new applicants we have, I understand, Doug?
Let me start by apologizing to you. I was, uh, drafting my resignation from planning and zoning in my head when you were postponing taking action on the parking on grass. We already are two chairs short. Uh, I did not realize when we went into our meeting that we were gonna fill both chairs. I went in anticipating filling one chair and, uh, we got back applicants and we used our matrix. And we found that we have a glitch or maybe a, an improvement we need to put onto our matrix. We may need to have a number of, a vote number of fifty percent or sixty percent or some random number for, uh, confidence. Uh, it, you can take a lot of numbers, but, uh, you don't know the candidates or whatever. And do you have it, do you cut it off? Where's your competence line or confidence line in, in your candidates that you're voting for? And we're gonna have to work on that unless y'all tell us, don't send us anything here with a less than fifty percent confidence or.
So you're saying a measurement tool to evaluate the potential new members to the P and Z board?
So based on our matrix, that's our recommendation before you.
So, um, to make sure I'm clear and make sure counsel is clear, because I'm a little confused right now. Is your recommendation to give you time to come up with a metric or is your recommendation to appoint these?
No, we discovered that when we were, when we were interviewing the candidates and, uh, needed to talk to you guys and see how y'all feel about it. You know, do we ran, do we just pass anybody or should there be a confidence, competency or confidence level?
I would, uh, you might talk to Jim, um, in regards to when they had, uh, new board members. They had something like that that they utilized. So that may be applicable to the P and Z as well.
Good, good intel.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Um, so I understand you, uh, your board, your current board, you and your current board are recommending appointing these two applicants.
Just one.
There's two or one?
There were three applicants. Two showed up for interview. Um, they, without, I don't think any hesitation of recommended, uh, Mr. Slowbod to be appointed. Um, there was some hesitancy to appoint Marshall Bellows just because nobody knew him. And, uh.
He had been saying meetings or something like that.
So would P, so would P and Z be comfortable with recommending the appointment of Bob Slowbod and giving you more time to do further interview with Mr. Bellows?
We will reach another obstacle in February. We have two candidate or two board, two commissioners that will. In February, we have the possibility of two other commissioners rolling off. So that would put us needing to have a field of candidates to fill three possible positions. But, uh, this was kinda disappointing. We had lots of feedback, lots of people telling us how to do our business at our, um, evening session.
I can understand that.
And nobody signed up to take on the job. Yeah, yeah.
Can understand that.
And, and you know, we had this, we had this discussion a couple of years ago. We said, guys, money's gonna find us. We need to be proactive. We need to be moving ahead and ready for this growth. I thought I could sneak out the back door before it really happened. It caught us. It bit me. Here we are. And our job is, I, I'm gonna describe it as a job. Our job as commissioners has taken on a whole new learning level and it's taking on a whole new commitment for, for learning and.
Time.
Workshops that we did. I mean, these, these new candidates, if we're sworn in, you, we're gonna have to get them up to speed on, uh, on the regs and all that, you know, so, so I.
We have, we have two vacancies.
Yes.
They're just recommending.
We need to have, and, and I would just add, you know, so these appointments are appointed at the, at the pleasure of the, the council.
Yes.
And, and be removed in the same way. Um. My recom, my, my suggestion is that, you know, you could appoint this Bellows fellow and observe him. You have a, you have a person on.
We should refer to him as not the Bellows fellow, okay?
All right. I apologize. Mr. Bellows?
Marshall?
Mr. Bellows?
Well, he's not, he's not.
He's not here.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Um, so the appointment could be made and it, it requires your nomination and the consent of the council. You know, there, there is, it's important, I think, that you get the feedback from the boards that are making the request or the, or you're filling those voids.
We're achieving grading and so on.
Doug, do you think that the P and Z?
I think they're recommending Robert.
Prepare to take action on this?
That's.
But there's, I don't understand that there's three different scoring or shit, there's five different scoring sheets.
They scored all three even though only two of them interviewed.
Yeah.
I believe.
Some of them did.
Some of them did.
One, some of them scored two.
I got you. Um, so you're saying if, is it Bellows?
Mr. Bellows who interviewed.
If, you're saying if, if we, uh, go ahead and, and place Mr. Bellows on there and it doesn't work out, we still have the ability to.
Remove him.
Remove him.
At counsel's discretion.
At counsel's discretion. And that's gonna come back from. And both, are these both Rockdale people? Because I know that's not a requirement.
It is a requirement.
It is a requirement and they both lived here, one lived here three years and one he lived here four years, something on that order.
We need to adjust that.
It, uh, if you wanna adjust that, it's a charter amendment?
We, we're gonna have to consider something or we're gonna volunteer everybody else to death too.
I think that's why Leslie, correct me if I'm wrong, is same thing is.
She didn't live in the city, so she resigned.
Jason and I come up in February and Jason cannot by the charter reapply.
I think we can definitely, counsel, we should consider, uh, investigating and addressing that concern.
Is that just P and Z or that's all? Because it, that doesn't apply to parks, does it? Um.
All right, Brad.
Well, another, another night when we got more time.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just didn't want y'all to think that we said that we have full confidence, you know. Doesn't mean a thing. I just don't know somebody. I'm, you know, he, he's available.
And, and I.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion. I make a motion that we, uh, take the recommendation of Robert Slowbod, um, in, in pu- for the place, for one place on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that the planning and zoning come back to us after interviewing Mr. Bellows, uh, next month with a recommendation or a non-recommendation for the second position.
We've interviewed him.
You wanted more time?
Yeah, yeah.
On me?
Yeah, but it's Christmas, Thanksgiving and, no, I, I understand your motion. The, yes.
I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
A motion on the second and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Doug, you're welcome to give any discussion if you'd like. Joan, any discussion?
I'm happy with that.
Counsel?
We did interviewing this.
Okay. Uh, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Hi, Bob.
Congratulations. And I, I just wanna say, uh, my sincerest thanks to P and Z for all the work that you do. And, um, I do appreciate your hard work and all your efforts. And I know that, uh, as most everybody that sits in one of these chairs or holds a position on, on your planning and zoning board takes a lot of, um, feedback that you don't deserve. So thank you for weathering the storm and doing your job as well. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, we are, let's see, we already took care of item G, so we're on H. Consider and take any necessary action on a hotel occupancy tax fund request to, or hotel market feasibility study. Jim?
Hello again. So this is a, just a request to use, uh, some hotel occupancy tax money to fund a feasibility study for new hotel developments in Rockdale. So why are we doing this? Where is this coming from? On the one hand, we, uh, just entered into a contract with Retail Strategies to do more retail recruitment, uh, in Rockdale. So this is part of that. And yes, hotels are not retail, but it is a matter of that we are trying to recruit businesses into Rockdale. As I've talked to different hotel developers just over the last couple of years, uh, these calls tend to come in waves whenever something happens like at SLR or there's some big announcement or whatever. We get a lot of different phone calls into the office. From time to time, those are hospitality developers. And they always ask the same question. Do you guys have some kind of a feasibility study? And the answer is, no, we do not. And so what this would be is us getting that feasibility study, having that in hand so that whenever we do get those calls, we can, we can, uh, just pass it on and give it to them. Uh, I also understand that the gentleman who has the days in would like to do one of these three-star hotels. But he's getting some pushback from corporate and having this feasibility study could give him a little bit of quote unquote ammo to, um, you know, to, to convince corporate that yes, Rockdale is a market that could support something like a three-star hotel.
So, um, as Ms. Ms. Ratliff said earlier, I don't know the, all the numbers on how many rooms are available and get rented and or used on a weekly, monthly basis. Um, but my, my concern is that the MD, i- if, if this is truly needed, um, that the MDD is already receiving, is funded by tax money. Um, and this is, to me, this is a double dip, uh, to get the hotel motel piece of this paid for, uh, out of a different pocket. That's, that's my, I think that's gonna be the perception. That's my perception of it. Um, whether it's needed or not, that's, I, I don't, I can't say that it is or isn't because I don't live in that world to know that. But where the money comes from, I feel like it's already been fun. MDD's already been funded once with, uh, tax money.
I did, I did reach out to the, the gentleman that Ms. Ratliff had mentioned, Scott, that helped craft the ordinance. And he did say this was an eligible activity, um, under, under the, the parameters that the hot taxes can be funded. Um, you know, we do have, um, funding available, both in what's budgeted this year and in, in the reserve of the hotel occupancy tax. You know, I think that the idea is that this would actually generate more hot taxes in the future to support the efforts of the city. Um, and, you know, one of the, one of the issues in regard to this, and I understand this is, this is a completely counsel issue, um, but with. is, this is a completely council issue, but with what is going on with SLR, you know, whether we have six, I, I think that there were listed six, six hotels here and there's a seventh one that's maybe renovating.
Actually, that, once that one's renovated, there'll be nine.
There'll be nine.
Nine.
Um, you know, I don't know how many, how many rooms that they have. Jim, in, in your report, you list Regency Inn, Sky Inn, Days Inn, Surestate, Quality Inn and Rainbow Courts.
Then what used to be Walters, excuse me.
Walters.
What's that one?
What used to be Walters, that convenience store, he, he has a line of motel rooms that he rents.
Um, he's the Texaco.
I don't know what it's called. I still call it Walters.
I think Roxanne has something to say.
I don't see a name on that building, so I don't know what it is.
With regards to the hotels that we actually get taxes paid on, I know of seven hotels in Rockdale.
We have, but one of them, one of them we haven't received anything from because they've been closed, maybe for renovation, but regardless, you know, what we would be looking at using this feasibility study would be not to recruit the same level of hotel, but a three or four-star hotel, the hot, full, or full service that, you know, I think there's, as SLR expands and those industries come in, those executives that are visiting are gonna wanna have someplace to stay and, and if we do this feasibility study now, we're probably two years or two and a half years potentially from a facility actually opening that would coincide really well with when SLR is gonna be going hot and heavy, so.
Joan?
SLR's also gonna be building a hotel and since I've been here, there's been three hotels added. The occupancy is spread out among every, yours goes down because it's spread out among all these hotels and I, why don't we work with what we have? I mean, look at Athens, Texas, they started a program where they go to their hotels and they say, this is what we see as, as an economic development force or the city that we need from a hotel and we want you to try to provide that. And the hotels say, yeah, this is, we know from our experience what we need to do. They use hot funds to match...
Reinvest them.
Funding, so they can reinvest in the existing hotels. Why don't we consider that? Why haven't I or hoteliers, maybe Dawn has been asked, but with Days Inn, why haven't we been asked, where do, do you have business, travelers? If you do, what entities are they with? We have SLR. You saying that there's no place for them to stay is not accurate.
I, I didn't say they had, we have, we have, I'm sorry?
I thought you did.
No, I just say that there's gonna be more, there's gonna be more demand as we grow and they will be looking for three and four-star hotels to potentially stay in.
How do you know that? How do you know that? That's what they're looking for.
The feasibility study is what is intended to be able to document that and it may, and the feasibility study may say, no, that's not the case.
Yeah.
I mean, we may wanna, we may end up spending this money and it doesn't show us what we hope for, it doesn't show us.
Just to echo what Lynn is saying, what are the reservations for the MDD not being able to pay for this?
I beg your pardon, I'm sorry.
What are the reservations or is there a reservation why the MDD can't pay for this?
There's not one. We just thought that the first logical step would be ask the, see if we could use hotel occupancy taxes to pay for it.
So, can I piggyback off of Esme's question?
Yes.
If you have a retailer come in, who pays for that feasibility study?
There's usually not one, but there's a couple of different studies that, that we have either done or are doing right now. So, we subscribe to that Placer data platform, which there is a retail gap analysis and there's a lot of demographic data that we have access to through that platform, so that's the first part. The second part is that aforementioned Retail Strategies contract that we signed, so that was $45,000 a year and that's, you know, supposed to attract retail for both, you know, I mean, you know, the city's gonna get sales tax money out of it, we're gonna get sales tax money out of that and we're paying that cost 100%. You know, we didn't ask the city to, you know, pay two-thirds of it.
I'd like to say something. On, on the reference here of the discussion, you talk about a three or four-star hotel and you referenced the Hampton Inn and a Holiday Inn, those are not three or four-star hotels, those are two-star motel hotels. And I look at when Samsung started building in Taylor and yes, Taylor has a Holiday Inn Express, I think that's their probably highest level two-star hotel there in Taylor and I apologize to Taylor if I got that wrong, but those employees that were working at Samsung, they were either staying in Taylor or they were coming here to Rockdale to stay in our hotels. A lot of them at our bed and breakfast boutique hotel out here, Rainbow Courts. So, I guess my thought is if, if those executives from Samsung, if, if they're not going towards Austin to stay and, and most of them are coming here to stay during their visit to their Samsung facility, new facility, why, why would that be different with SLR? And maybe that's a question you can't answer in all fairness, right?
Yeah, I can't answer that, right.
But my point is, I don't see that being any different with SLR, not potentially using what we already have here in our city.
One of the things that Ms. Ratliff said, that SLR will be building hotels.
Sure, absolutely they will.
And, you know, we have a relatively short window, about three to five years probably before that happens, but once they start developing that, that commercial part of their product, it's gonna be more and more hard, it's gonna be more difficult for us to attract that type of development here. This is the time that we would have to potentially develop it and there is no question that we need to continue to work better with our existing hotels. The fact is, I just enjoyed several, a few months of Joan's hospitality, which I really, really appreciated.
Right. I would say, I mean, as a traveler, I think there's sometimes where you wanna stay at a boutique hotel and depending on what kinda trip you're on, you wanna stay at a Holiday Inn Express, so I can see that, but I, what I'm feeling is that maybe the current hotel owners with the, with the hot funds don't wanna be part of, you know, paying for that. So I think it would maybe make sense, maybe, maybe make people feel better if the MDD pays for it. As a hotel owner, I would love to see what we are spending hot funds on, the primary purpose is to bring tourism, to bring people to Rockdale and what are we doing with our hot funds to market or to bring those tourists here, besides the Rockdale Fair, which is awesome. Right. I know we're doing events and things, but I'm sure Roxanne can give you a list of the transactions for that too. I'm not opposed to the feasibility study, I believe it needs to be done, I just don't know if it needs to come from hot funds. What do y'all think?
Fixing to jump out there. I'm hungry.
Take it.
Oh.
I agree with you.
Do you agree?
I agree.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that, what is the staff's recommendation? I'll make a motion that we do not authorize the use of hot funds for the feasibility study for hotel motel potentials.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Being known, discussion will vote, all in favor, said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Okay.
You're on 10I, consider taking any necessary action on a request for hotel hot funds submitted by the Rockdale Girl Softball League for funding reimbursement for improvements to the city softball fields. Tim?
This request came in a couple of weeks ago and I did reach out to the applicant. One of the issues that we have, there's a limitation on how, there is a limitation on how hot funds can be spent and this is a chicken and the egg type problem because of the fact that we're not allowed to use hot funds for this type of activity unless they've hosted 10 tournaments in the last 12 months. There is a specific part of the code that, that has that in there. They were requesting $40,000 for improvement to the girl softball diamonds. I think that there's a need to do that, but we need to look at the general fund probably for, for that effort.
Did they receive hot funds last year?
They received $14,000 in funds two years ago or last year?
Two years ago.
They received funds last year, there should be in your consent agenda, a hot fund report with the, the funds that we spent. I don't know if that guy included or not.
So they did, they did receive it and it was for improvements to their fields so that they could host tournaments?
Yeah.
But unfortunately, that has not, I mean, I think the improvements were made, I'm not sure.
Well, I, I wanna make a correction here because they did host some tournaments. They did host a league district tournament and I think they hosted a league state tournament as well. So they did host some tournaments.
Right.
They just did not host a minimum of 10 and I'm not sure where that minimum of 10 number comes from.
It comes from the state law.
Okay. My question is, how are we gonna host 10 tournaments with the field in existence away? Fair question.
The funds that were given last year went to fix the netting and the poles.
You know, just to speak on softball and Little League, all that and the above, you know, I believe it's a big part of our culture of Rockdale and yes, they may not host 10, but the few that they do, it's a big event, not only for our own citizens, but there are people that come and stay the night and eat here and whatnot. So I would like to see us support them, I don't know if we can do 40,000.
We could, we can, we can't use hot funds, but we could do some amendment from general funds, from what I've been told.
Joan, one second.
I was just gonna say that those tournaments fill up the hotels. Once and I can't.
Yep, they do.
Right.
And they fill up our restaurants.
Right. It's just such a good...
And convenience stores.
And convenience stores. That's not here.
Mayor Pro Tim Perry, I think you wanted to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we take staff recommendation and deny the $40,000 from hot funds and at the same time, direct staff to look into the general fund and Parks and Recreation Fund that we could possibly help the girl softball field in some way, somehow and bring that, back that recommendation.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Being known, discussion will vote, all in favor, said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We will now, at 8:51 PM, convene into executive session. Under sections 551072 and 551087 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate about the purchase or exchange lease of real property and the development for the city's six acres located 1166 West Highway 79 and number two, deliberate about economic development negotiations regarding development agreement with Republic Ridge, for Republic Ridge. We are now convening into executive session. We are back into regular session, adjourned out of executive session, back into regular session officially at 9:47 PM. Counsel, are there any motions coming out of executive session?
No motions.
No actions from executive session? No motions from executive session, this city council meeting is officially adjourned at 9:47 PM.